I'll call the Roseville Economic Development Agency Authority to order. And it's Monday, July 15th, 6:00 p.m. Pat Trudgeon, will you call up Row, please?
Brett.
Here.
Number Schroeder.
Here.
Number Strong.
Here.
Vice President Graff.
Here.
President Row.
Row is absent, but he let us know he could not make it tonight. So, um, I'll cross my things off the list as I go. President Leachons. Dilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Next, we do the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any additions or corrections or changes?
Steph does not.
Anything from the council?
Oh, nope.
I have motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved by member. R S. Second by member Strong. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Almost. Motion carries. We're going to defer public comment to just before our city council meeting. If that's okay with everybody. And we'll move to the business items. The first item on the agenda is reconsider a resolution authorizing amendment and restated collateral assignment of the tax increment financing notes for Roseville East Housing Associates. That is our Jeanie Kelsey, and I should know. Community Development.
Housing and Economic Development Program Manager, so helpful. Thank you, Vice President Graff, board members, for your consideration. At the last meeting you had, you did pass and authorize an amendment to the development agreement reducing the TIF on the Oasis and also on the Harbor. Harbor at that time had all of its other documents available for your authorization, which was new collateral assignment of the TIF note. And at this point, they're now concentrating on the Oasis so that we can close that development out. So in the packet for your consideration, there is a new collateral assignment for the TIF notes. By the way, this development has two TIF notes because one is taxable and the other one is tax exempt. So upon your, if there's any other questions, in the packet is for your authorization, the resolution authorizing that collateral assignment.
And we have gone over this at the last meeting, so this is the final step in this. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts on this? This is pretty straightforward, and it has to be done in order to close out the.
The new TIF.
Yeah, so.
Do we have to do both at, oh, separate, or can we do them together?
This one you can do it together because it's one development. The last one had the two.
I'd move to approve both.
Motion moved by ultimate member Schroeder.
Second.
Second by member Strong. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Almost. So the next item is discussed proposals for a comprehensive housing needs assessment. And I think we will have.
Yeah. Thank you, Member Graff, members of the board. Jeanie was pretty active in obviously working with these consultants. So I wanted to make sure we were both available to answer any questions. This request is to proceed towards the next step of completing that housing needs assessment we've talked about. And it was last brought before the EDA in May. The last actual needs assessment was completed in October of 2018. The EDA and formerly the HRA has historically completed these assessments approximately every five years. And these assessments have been used by developers, planning commissioners, city council members, board members, in informing decisions related to land use and public finance assistance in the past. And may we appear before you wanting to know if you would be interested in broadening the housing needs assessment? We wanted to examine some of the homelessness impacts within our community and any other sort of factors that may impact housing. And the EDA agreed. And so we have met with numerous consultants to try and understand what types of information could be gathered beyond the traditional needs assessment, which is a heavily demographic exercise. When we were last before you in May, we thought, based on our initial meetings with those consultants, that we would have to pair two consultants together because we were struggling to find one who could accomplish everything that we were looking for. But since then, with the help of Jeanie, of course, she led the way. Stan Tech, we discovered, was engaging in a similar study in other communities. I know they've completed one in Shoreview, New Brighton, Van Ness Heights, I think, as well. And their studies have found the right balance between that traditional needs assessment while trying to also understand the impact to a community related to homelessness or any other sort of social service needs that relate to housing. As I mentioned, they've worked with other communities in the area, and we've reached out to them and heard nothing but positive feedback about the studies and specifically the process that they are utilizing to gain that information, their relationships with city councils, EDA members, and the public as well. As such, we would like you to direct us to work with Stan Tech on that assessment. They put together a proposal. It is in your packet, along with proposals from all the other consultants we looked at. And if we could have the overhead camera, I did attempt to summarize the results of those proposals in a table. As I mentioned, back in May, we weren't really sure what we were looking for when we came to you in May and starting meeting with consultants. We knew we wanted to look at something beyond the traditional needs assessment. And I only bring that up again because we didn't draft an RFP because we weren't really certain what all information could be looked at. And I apologize, it's blurry. It's in your packet. It's the exact same, and that's in your packet. You'll note within that table, some of the things that we looked at was the proposer's ability to conduct that traditional assessment, their ability to look at some of the other qualitative items related to housing need within a community, the strategies for implementation with both the traditional and the non-traditional needs. We did look at whether or not they had local experience and then where applicable costs. We didn't get costs from all of the consultants just because they didn't all come up with the information that we were looking for, but if they did, we did ask for a cost. You'll note, we did consider partnering consultants, specifically Maxfield and Wilder. But you'll see, if we did that, it would have been a much more expensive study. It probably would have been more data as well, but maybe not necessarily data that was really useful for housing strategy. So I also want to note, Carrie and Molly are in the audience with PD, our housing navigator and social worker. They've been really great to attend these meetings with us, to sort of ask questions about the data that they'd be looking at. They'll probably be interviewed as part of these studies, as well as connecting the consultant with other people within the community or working within the community that could provide valuable information. So I really just want to note, they've been actively involved in this process as well. You'll note the Stan Tech proposal is $57,500. I did note in the report that since the last housing needs assessment was completed, the EDA has collected about $30,000 in levy money that we have not spent. So we would like to obviously spend that money and then some additional EDA general fund balance to cover the study. So we're not proposing to levy any additional dollars to complete the work. So if you agree with this analysis, we would bring back a professional services agreement for you in September. We could also bring in Stan Tech staff to sort of talk with you and explain the proposal if you'd like us to do that. If you'll, if you agree to go along with them, you'll note that they've laid out a process that would actively involve you along the way. So you wouldn't just authorize the proposal and then receive the report. So there would be plenty of back and forth time along the way. Again, Jeanie helped talk with these consultants, gather them together, looked at the proposals. So I think the two of us could collectively answer any questions you might have, as well as, of course, Carrie and Molly in the audience.
Thank you. Council has questions? Comments? Number Strong.
Thank you. So have we used Stan Tech in the past for other consulting projects?
Yes, engineering uses them currently for several other items.
Right, so we've had good experience with them as an organization as well. So I was just curious, in Wilder's proposal, it was a much longer timeframe, that they were planning on expanding this out. I think it was almost 18 months versus five months. Do you think that would produce the quality and, like you said, quantity of work that we could wrap our heads around and utilize well in this situation?
I'll start with that, and Jeanie, you can add. So Wilder's proposal was very vast and was looking at a lot of different things. The way they put it together, it was kind of à la carte, so we wouldn't necessarily have had to have done all of it. So presumably, if you wish to work with them, we could whittle down that list or figure out what's important to you to shorten the timeframe if you wanted to work with them. But I am not concerned about the Stan Tech proposal's timeframe, given the information that they're going to be examining. And again, Wilder put together a great proposal. I know PD was interested in it as well, just because it was so vast. Our concern there was, that might be really great information, but what are we going to do with it in terms of a housing need or a strategy development perspective? So that's why we are opting to not recommend that proposal to you.
And then, the last time we had the study was done six years ago. Do you know who we utilized and approximately? And what was the approximate cost at that time?
Seventeen thousand.
So much different scope of work. Okay, thank you.
Number Schroeder.
Yes, just a couple of questions. Do we have an estimate on how many unhoused people we have in Roseville, homeless? Just kind of an idea of just the size of it?
I do not know.
We would have to defer.
Come on up.
Have a seat.
Currently, on my caseload, I have about 25 people that I'm working with. A lot of them are prevention, though, also. So I can say that's usually my average is 25, and clients come and go. And but a lot of people at Motel Six are clients of mine.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea of the, in a way, as we're going into these proposals, it's interesting to see where we're at. And then when we go through these proposals, because my next question is going to be on, because they have suggestions to help. And then it's always an interesting thing to see where we're at. And then, once we do this, which way are we going with this? Is it what we're doing helping, or do we need to do something more? So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Idea where we're starting. Thank you.
Yep.
And then the other question I had, and maybe this might have something to do, is Stan Tech's talked about that they have made suggestions to other cities on homeless needs and what to do. Do we have an idea of what those suggestions were?
We would have had to look at each city that they did that for because one case that they gave us, which was an extensive study, was for a whole county towards the east. And they, of course, have different programming, right, and availability of sources. So that would have been what they would have done at that point. I think the one thing that I found very interesting that we've never gotten from a market study is that Stan Tech also looks at the overburden, meaning income overburden. How many people in our community are over, you know, income burdened on the fact that they're paying over rent and that their incomes are not up to that point? So then we really find out what is that target of that income that's needed. The other thing is they do that also for affordable housing. Like, what is the burden of the people who live in Roseville to be able to even afford a house in Roseville, and what is that number? So they really look at an extensive amount, which I was overly impressed. I've never seen that at any other market study company. And the ones that you saw that we did reach out to do a lot for the state of Minnesota has anybody who comes in for housing tax credits is required to do a market study. Most of these people are all on that list, but yet all they do is do the number. How many affordable units, how many housing units? And they don't look at that full breadth of information that is really needed to really understand our community.
Well, exactly, because what I'm thinking about is, not only are people that are homeless now, but, and you've touched on this, it's always better to try to prevent than to correct. And so, obviously, then their suggestions or the way they're going to look at this is going to be that broad breadth. So then we can make sure, and, you know, that's, if you can stop the flow of that happening, that's just as important as helping people that are already there. So anyways, good, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Amber Ratten.
I would agree with those comments and the positive goals of the proposal that we have before us. One of the things that I appreciated, Ms. Gunlock, you talked about how the Wilder thing would get us into things maybe we can't control. I think all of this is right on that borderline. Certainly, we have a couple of excellent people in our staff, but we don't have the resources or the mandate from the state to really handle the big picture here as much. And so I appreciated that they mentioned partners. And I know that our folks here are working all the time with partners, so I appreciate that work. I would think that if they've done a study with Shoreview and New Brighton, they're going to know the partners. That should shorten that. That part, the answers should be pretty much exactly the same, if not exactly the same. So, and that's good. Thinking about their list of who they were going to talk to for their homelessness analysis, I think that we need to make sure, and you folks may already work with them, but Mary Sue Hansen at the suburban Ramsey family collaborative is super important for understanding. They are so tied into our school districts and the families that are part of that, as well as other needs in our community. And to that point, it talks about talking to Roseville schools, but the Montezu schools also serves our city, making sure that's a specifically noted partner in this inventory that we do. And then I hope that at some level, we're looking at how we share this with Ramsey County Public Health. And that we are maybe working with these other suburban communities who've taken the time to do this more, this broader form of study, and saying, how can we work together to push some more buttons at Ramsey County, who does have the mandate to be the lead partner, really, in a lot of this? So that would be my thoughts on this. Appreciate all the work.
Number Strong.
Thank you. I just, I concur, Amber Ratten. I was thinking the same thing, that, you know, what are, how do we tie in with this information with the county? You know, not only and what the process is and going there, but we overlap in so many ways. And where does that line fall? And I'm sure that there'll be people in the community who question whether, what are, what is our responsibility? And so I think it's good to know, maybe after a study, but what our goals are as a city? Are we going for 100% housed? Are we, like, what are we hoping to achieve? And I hope that we have an idea when we go into the study of what maybe our goal is. What are we hoping? Obviously, 100% housed would be wonderful, but it's not likely to happen. So what's a reasonable outcome? You know, what's a reasonable expectation? So I don't know if that's something that we need to talk about in advance, but I was just thinking about that, and then how we overlap with the county and where's the expectation, where do we end when the county takes over? And so I don't know. I'm very much in support of this study, and I think it sounds like a great combination of ideas. But I think I would love to know what our ultimate goal is, like, and maybe, like I said, we maybe will learn what the goal is once we've completed the study, but it might help us in creating that.
I think the biggest thing, again, with Stan Tech is, guess what? You get to guide it. You're going to be intake from the very beginning. And so I'm happy to say that, again, I've never seen a market study do that, where they are really doing focus groups, and they asked us to identify who that focus group would be. And we said, of course, you, because you are the board, you're involved, you're elected official, so you're really the ones to also help guide where you want this to go and ultimately, what do you want out of it?
I think, for me, the study would be establish the goal. Because I think without the study, we don't have the data and the information. So that's how I would look at that part of it. The other part, I did have a couple of things that I noted in my notes here that really stuck out to me. And one of them was that it's specific to Roseville. Now, I agree with Member Ratten that, of course, it'll be very similar to New Brighton and Shoreview, but I think we can overlap and maybe would be even nice to be able to coordinate some things. But we could also right-size the programming that we have to reflect this because right now, we're kind of trying to guess at things, and we don't have the data to do that. And so I would look at a way to retailer our program so that they work with this study, obviously. So that would be more effective.
Do you have a, Amber?
No, I agree with everything you just said. I was definitely not.
No, I did like the market context map, too, the highlighting. There were some really good things in here, from my perspective. And we have worked with Stan Tech before we. I felt comfortable with that as a study.
Yes.
I just have the additional question. Is that our goal, do we need to have conversation before we would bring Stan Tech in to talk as a board what our goals are before we want to meet with them?
What are thoughts on that?
I don't, I don't know what we don't know. So that's the hard part about it.
Amber Ratten.
I think I would start with what's in their proposal, are we comfortable with that? And then from there, I would agree with Vice President Graff. I got to throw that in there for you. That we're going to, that we're going to get information, and then we need to start talking to partners. And where is our role going to be? What are our focuses going to be? What do we say? City of Roseville can do this, this, and this. City of Roseville with partners can do these other five, whatever. That we will take at least action steps from that.
And we can also ask those partners. I mean, we have more information to go to them and say, hey, this is what we need.
Yeah.
You know, so it gives us some strength there in my opinion.
As a start, would you like us to bring Stan Tech back when we bring the professional services agreement back, assuming that's where you want to go, so you can get at least their idea of how to answer some of these questions and then how it will unfold throughout the process? Okay.
That would be good. Before we sign a contract. Did you need anything else from us tonight, or?
Just understanding that this is what you want us to pursue.
Do you need a motion? Ask us to direct you?
I don't think we need a motion. I think your direction is pretty clear. We'll bring the professional services agreement back at the next meeting with Stan Tech and an opportunity for you to ask them more directed questions.
And then that would need a motion.
And then at that point, we'd need a motion on the professional services agreement if you wanted to proceed.
That make sense, everybody? Good, thanks very much. And the last one is discussion regarding the budget and preliminary levy for 2025. Can we have, it's Gunlock here presenting.
Thank you. Board members, every year, the EDA is obviously tasked with preparing a preliminary budget and levy for consideration of the, by the city council sometime in September. For 2025, we have put together a proposed preliminary budget of $461,856. This includes a preliminary levy request of $376,856. The actual budget has decreased by $11,504. However, the levy proposed at this point is a little bit higher from 2024 by $11,621. The details making up this budget and levy request are as follows. I just want to highlight a couple of points. The most significant one is the loss of the $23,125 of charitable pledge revenue that Northwestern College had been paying. There is about $6,000 of added cost for salaries and benefits. The EDA does fund 1.5 FTE. We've reduced the energy efficient program funding by $1,000. This is the fund that supports energy audits, although we think that is still enough money to continue to fund energy audits at about the pace where we've been building back up to since COVID. We have reduced our economic development consulting budget by an additional $10,000. We've eliminated the $2,000 of funding for the business education series. This is something the chambers have been putting on. Once COVID hit, they went virtual, reduced them, and now I don't think they've held one in quite a while. So, and even when they were holding them, we weren't having a lot of businesses attend those, but this money was paying for that business to attend those educational events. And then we've eliminated $2,000 of educating and education and training funds for staff and $1,000 of educating and training funding for board members. I also wanted to make note of a couple of EDA budget items that don't necessarily affect the budget, but are important to keep in mind when we talk about this levy amount. Funding for the Rice and Larpenter Alliance is through the EDA, and we've kept that funding level flat at $40,000. And we are not budgeting any additional funds for a variety of different programs that the EDA supports, including the revolving loan fund. You may remember, a couple of years ago, we revamped a lot of our programs. We reduced the interest rate on the regular revolving loan. We have the senior deferred, the emergency program, and then the first generation down payment assistance. Back in 2023, you authorized the transfer of $200,000 of general fund dollars to this fund to keep it replenished, so we don't need to budget any additional levy dollars for that. We are also not proposing any additional money for the small business loan fund. This is something that started, I think, in 2020 or 2021. There's still enough funding in that account to cover at least four loans, assuming they take out the full loan amount, but it could be as many as five. And we have actually taken on two of those in the last year. And then we also are not proposing any additional funding for the housing replacement fund. This is the fund that we've targeted for our land trust program. We've been able to run that program, namely with grant funding that Jeanie's been very aggressive in going after. So I want to note no additional levy dollars for that as well. I did prepare a budget comparison. It's in your packet for years 2022 through 2024. It includes budget actuals within the packet materials. We also received a question over the weekend, and so we provided you some information about what the EDA's general fund balance was at the end of the year for the last few years, as well as its current cash balance. We've also created a graph to sort of illustrate what's been going on with the EDA levy since the EDA was created in 2017. Obviously, prior to that, it was the HRA. It's consistently been going down since 2019. This would be the first year at the preliminary stage we're proposing an increase. So at this time, we're really just presenting the preliminary budget levy, looking for feedback from you. At some point before September, you will have to adopt a resolution making a recommendation on the preliminary budget levy to the city council. But for now, I can answer any questions you might have on what we put together.
Amber Ratten.
First, I'd like to say that I appreciate all of the detail going back several years. I appreciated the additional stuff we got over the weekend here, or today. I think that we've talked about this with some other budgets. The EDA has the most transparent budget potentially of any of our budgets, and maybe partially because it's smaller and partially because it came out of the HRA. The whole process for showing the budget was really, really different. And I appreciate the ease that we are able to look at this. I think, that's not regrettably, but it certainly makes it easier, though, for us to say, well, how about we take another $10,000 of that program that hasn't used anywhere, you know, one quarter of what we're still going to budget for? So for me, when I look at this budget and the proposed numbers, I think we could get to a zero levy pretty easily. And for me, that would be, that would be a goal. I think we could actually go down again, but certainly a zero levy is possible without affecting any of the programs and leaving squish room in there for some program to grow at double the rate it's been growing, for example. So that would be my thing. And again, I appreciate the way this is showing our budgets and our actuals going back many years. That's very helpful.
Schroeder.
Yes, thank you. I agree. This is one of the, I really, really like having this budget the way it's laid out with the multiple years and the budget and the actual. That's, that's really nice, and it's true. It's easier to then look at the detail. And then again, I also appreciate you sending out the fund balance, which the fund balances have been typically. Um, and then again, I also appreciate you sending out the uh the fund balance, which the fund balances have been typically anything left over overused. And it shows what we have available as as um um reserve. You know, I I agree because there's a couple of funds, you know, when you talked about the um the consultant on call, you went down ten thousand. But I don't think we've actually used more than like five thousand in the last few years. So I think there's a little room in there. And then there's room in in on another fund too. And I agree with um Amber that I think we could do a zero um levy. Cause and part of that is also based on the uh fund balance. Typically, you want to have enough in your fund balance to cover, um, I think it's thirty five percent. And right now we have over a hundred percent in the fund. And um and which also then tells me we have a plenty room to take money for the StanTech study out of there. And so since thirty five percent would be closer to a hundred and thirty two thousand and it we're at four hundred and seven, um, I think we do have room to be comfortable with the zero levy. So so I would agree with that.
Amber Strong, yeah?
Nothing.
I think I would agree with the comments that were made. And I think it gives us an opportunity with this DanTech study to, as I said, review some of these things and see how we can adjust and make that work better with the data we get out of the study. I know that won't happen overnight, but so this is kind of just for this year. And then we can see what happens after we have that study and and re- readdress it next year. But I would agree that the levy, I I think we could probably get it to. Do you have any concerns?
Your feedback is not unexpected.
Such a nice.
So I um I know where to go and we can be back. As far.
Anything else from anyone? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I believe that's the last item on our. Correct? And so if we just take a pause here while we actually move to the journalist meeting, I don't know. Is there a motion or adjourned?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. So we will reconfigure a tiny bit. So we will. Call to order the city council meeting for July fifteenth. And we have had the roll call, so we will skip that and let that stand as usual. We've done the pledge of allegiance. Agendas are any are there any changes to the agenda from? From council from the staff? No, there's not. Are there any from the council? No, I was remiss in not men uh not introducing we have Pat Trudgeon at the on my left on the at the table. He's the city manager and we have Phil Tierney on my right. She's the city attorney. Oh, right. Well, then let's um have the motion on the agenda to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Now we will have public comment because we skipped that in the uh. So what's there? Anyone from the public who would like to speak to the council? We have a three minute minimum.
Let's make it a minimum. Whenever the public ready, go. You want PowerPoint ready?
No one's coming forward, so we'll pass that over. Recognitions and donations, do we have anything in that, Mr. Trudgeon?
No, we do not.
Okay. We have no items removed from this. So we will move to business items, which is number A, or receive organizational equity update. And that will be our director for twenty one.
Manager. Thank you. Little I was a little tight, sorry about that. My own weekend of soccer, sitting in chairs all day.
Weekend of sitting in chairs.
Sitting in chairs, no. Clarify that, put that on the record, not playing.
Should have left that where we were thinking you were playing.
You know, if you would have invited me to play and I wasn't good.
We could pull muscle together.
That's pressure.
One of my parents said they ran the forty yard dash and they. They had about twenty yards in, pulled their quad muscles on it. What'd you say?
Olympic wannabes.
Yeah, takes me a while to get stretched and warmed up to do that type of activity. So, hey, folks, how y'all doing today? Good?
Good.
Awesome. It's good to be here. I'm excited to talk about some really important work that's happening across the organization. Um, so I'm Antonio Montez. I should probably start there. I'm the Equity and Inclusion Manager here at the City of Roseville. I'm almost coming up on three months, so uh super excited about that. And uh, like I said, here to give you an update on what we've been up to a little bit, some of our planning stuff that we've been doing and some of the really good work that's happening across the the organization. So I'm gonna just jump in if that's cool with y'all. I didn't come with a relationship builder. I know how much Rachel loves those. So I could put one out there if you'd like, Rachel, but.
Especially when she's go back to anonymous.
But on our agenda today, we have, uh, I'd like to talk with you all about our long range plan around equity and inclusion uh for 2024, 2025. Uh, I'd like my partners that are leading our departments to come up and talk about some of their work that they've been doing and then end with some questions and answers. Does that work okay for y'all?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm gonna pop up an image and I just wanted to ask you, maybe this is our relationship builder. This is it. Here you go. Uh, I'd love to hear from folks if you are familiar with the image that's on your screen right now. If not, that's okay. No, all right. So this is the Sankofa bird. Sankofa bird. It's an image that is used widely by the Khan tribe in Ghana. And it's often depicted as a bird flying forward with its head facing backwards, reaching for that little circle thing. That's an egg that kind of represents knowledge and wisdom. And it's really about that knowledge and wisdom from the past. And Sankofa translates to San is to return, Ko is to go, and then Fa is to seek, right? So many people believe that this image is a representation of the idea that future generations will benefit from the knowledge and wisdom of those that came before them, right? And so as we think about our work around equity and inclusion and we continue on this journey, I think it's really important that we continue to think about the value of celebrating and learning from our past as we move forward in this really important work. So as we move into this conversation, I want you to think about the Sankofa bird and how we're moving forward, but also celebrating our past and learning from the 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 journey that we've been on. And in that, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've done and where we've been along our equity and inclusion journey. So the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission, you all have been really closely connected to that work. You've heard lots of updates from 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 that work and and the evolution of that community table. And we've celebrated their work and the important things that that commission has done in partnership with us. And it was really important as we started kind of this equity and inclusion journey that we've been on. You all know better than I do, um, but it's a part of our past and what we've done. The Government Alliance of Racial Equity, uh, so that's the G E R group. I think that happened in like 2018, 2019. Pat, does that sound about right? Yeah, 2018, 2019. And uh, it was a program of learning. It was a program of planning. And I think it really brought the organization to a place where we could start to talk about racial equity and talk about inclusion and really set us along the journey and the path around what does that mean as a government agency? What's our opportunity and what's our responsibility to do that kind of work as we deliver services to our community and our residents? I think numbers three, four, and five kind of happened around the same time. They might be out of out of sync here chronologically, but um there was some intentionality uh to hire my predecessor, Thomas Brooks, who did a lot of really good work as the first Equity and Inclusion Manager here at the City of Roseville to set some foundational pieces in place to give us an organizational direction on what does it mean to do equity and inclusion work here at the city. Around the same time, there was a partnership with Culture Brokers who helped us with some of the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan and the development of that. And then some staff data, which really looked at our workforce data and as a part of our S REAP, right? And I think that that's really important work for us to acknowledge and celebrate. So I think it's an intentional step in naming that we're committed to this work, right? We've made it an investment in resources from staff and from finance to say, hey, we're going to prioritize equity and inclusion, right? So it's a celebration, I think, that we need to do there. Twenty twenty three, uh, City of Roseville participated in the Racial Equity Dividends Report, which was pulled together by the Center for Economic Inclusion. And I think what that report did was took a moment in time, look at uh what is the infrastructure around racial equity and inclusion and planning uh of this organization, as well as many others across our state? And took a look at and said, how are you doing compared to your peers, both from an infrastructure, but also from a um progress standpoint? How are you kind of ranking towards your peers? Um, and it also identified opportunities for us to say, hey, you've got some chances and or some opportunities to do these things on your equity inclusion journey that maybe other folks have done as well. So that report came through in around 2023. And then, of course, you all know I joined in uh 2024, March of 2024, uh, and the position sat vacant for a little bit before I got here. But my whole plan of the first ninety days here is really about building relationship and spending time with leaders and learning about their work uh so that we can be in a true partnership and that it's not just Antonio coming in and being the Equity and Inclusion guy. It's Antonio coming in to be a partner in our work as we do serve the residents of Roseville. So that's a little bit about where we've been. And you all can stop me at any point if you have questions. Um, otherwise, I'll just keep following that work. So we've been there. Where do we wanna go? So when I think about this work, it's it's not always linear. It's kind of all over the place all the time. But when I think about what success looks like to me, I think about an organizational wide equity and inclusion strategy that advances the community aspirations and the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan that's embedded in the strategic plan, right? So that's a lot. Uh, and I acknowledge that, but I think it's it's all that work is happening already. So how do we make equity and inclusion a part of that when we're thinking about decisions? When we're thinking about programming, when we're thinking about planning? How are we making sure that equity and inclusion is happening all the time? And not just when Antonio walks in the room, right? Or that it's happening over there like, oh, the equity and inclusion work is over there while we're gonna do these things over here, right? Equity and inclusion, to me, has to be a part of that core work that we do. So you'll see as we continue our conversation that I really see this work equity and inclusion as our community aspirational work, right? So we'll talk about what that looks like in a second here. So I really want it to be embedded in our foundation in the work that will really guide our organization and the decisions that we make in the next five, ten to fifteen years. So and I think that's really important because as we know, our can our community continues to change and our needs change and how we support and deliver our community aspirations has to go along with that, right? And equity and inclusion is a really important part of that. So when we think about making decisions, we think about programs and apologies and strategies and initiatives, I want equity and inclusion to be at the center of all that. So how do we do this work? I shared this before. I think a lot of folks like uh in our communities for things to be linear and straightforward, right? Like I buy a desk and it gives me a step by step guide on how to build the desk. And then the desk is complete and I can use it, right? And and unfortunately, uh, equity and inclusion work is not linear and it's not straightforward. And it's kind of like this all the time, right? And um and this model is how we'll frame doing this work as we go forward. Uh, most folks, if you look at the wheel here, wanna jump right to action, right? Because that's just how our brains function, right? It's like, oh, we have a problem. Let's go solve it. Let's go do it. And we fix the problem, right? And and that's great. And and it gives us something to say, we did this this year. Uh, but I think what we miss when we skip the other steps around building relationship and building trust and building partnership is is that we're always in this mode of going right to action to fix something without this holistic view on how these other pieces may be interconnected, right? So you fix one thing and and you improve or advance equity and inclusion. Uh, but without the other pieces at play, are we unintentionally causing us to make and take action in another place that maybe we could have thought more holistically about? Had we been in relationship and had we built trust and had we built partnership along the way, right? So as we think about this, my role, I think, is to really help us stay in relationship, help us build trust, help us build partnership so that we can raise awareness around what it means to do equity and inclusion work so that then we can create action around what it means to do equity and inclusion work. And then we can, most importantly to me, be accountable to that work, right? And and really do it in an intentional way. So I see that as one of my primary roles is how are we doing those things to support the work that our community aspirations have laid out for us in an equitable and inclusive way? So the long range plan. I'm gonna just pop all these up because it's just easier for me if that's all right. So the long range plan is what's really gonna guide our work uh as we think about equity and inclusion. And this is gonna help us be successful because like we talked about, oftentimes we go right to action and respond to whatever the biggest thing is of that moment. And this is gonna help us stay focused on what does it mean to um do that work intentionally and strategically together? So you'll see here Equity and Inclusion Commission. I'm gonna talk about these more in the next few slides. I just wanna make a quick note. I did not include a slide for that because you all have uh talked about that quite a bit. You've heard about that. You've heard our most recent update. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as we uh move through this this presentation. On that note, um, I would love to share with y'all that we're accepting applications for the Equity and Inclusion Commission. It's open, it's live, folks can apply. So if you know folks in the community that you think would be a great fit and great partners on that particular commission, please let me know. I'd love to invite them out for a coffee, talk a little bit about some of our work and why I think there's a great opportunity to do some really important work for the city. So if you know of anyone, you let me know. Um, so I'm just gonna jump into the next slide because that talks about our Equity and Inclusion Leadership Team. Uh, and that looks like this. So I'm really excited about this, y'all. So uh, I have gotten support from our leadership team to come together monthly to spend some time talking about equity and inclusion. Now, we meet regularly as a leadership team. Uh, that happens all the time and we handle our conversations really well. And I really felt it was important for us, as as well as the leadership team agreed, that we spend some time intentionally being in partnership with each other to talk about equity and inclusion. So we had our first meeting last month. We have our next meeting this week, which I'm super excited about. And it's just that time to be purposeful and intentional. It's a space to learn and grow and challenge ourselves. Uh, we can practice building language and empowering our leaders to really be intentional about making decisions while they center equity and inclusion. I think it's also about exploring our own understanding, right? We have lifetimes of experiences that have shaped the way that we view the world and the way that we make decisions. And that's oftentimes playing kind of in the background when I make a decision is what I've experienced in the past. And we don't always explore what that means and how it impacts the way that we do our work. And and this is a space where we're gonna unpack some of that stuff and we're gonna challenge each other. Um, and of course, we're gonna build a relationship, right? So um, so I think that's really important and it's important science to show investment from our leadership team that this matters, to come together with this specific purpose, not like on the end of a department head meeting. So I'm really excited about the Equity and Inclusion Leadership Team. The Equity and Inclusion Action Team is super similar to the leadership team. Um, but I really see this as an initiative to build capacity across our organization because it'll include, it will include uh members of our team that are across every department at all levels. So it's not just the department heads. It's about what are what are our leaders across the organization, whether they're a formal leader or a non-formal leader? How are they helping us advance equity and inclusion? And how are we supporting them in wanting to do that work, right? So these will be folks from across the entirety of our organization that will help embed equity and inclusion into the way that we do our work because they have experience working directly with residents, serving residents directly. So they'll have a different perspective to bring to the conversation when we're talking about what does it mean to do equity and inclusion work than maybe some of our leaders do. I'd love for this to grow to representation from the community as well. I think we'll start building first internally and get that group rolling and then bring that perspective hopefully from community in a partnership model that will help us think about, are we being equitable and inclusive in all things that we do? So that's the plan there. Uh, you'll see learning and development is really important. Uh, that's gonna be around shared understanding, around things like history and language that we use in Roseville. If we were to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, the terms themselves right now, we probably each have a little bit of a different understanding about what does that mean? And then Roseville has a definition on what it means, right? So how do we ensure that folks, when we say diversity or we say equity or we say inclusion, that we're talking about the same thing and that we mean the same thing, right? Like I tell folks all the time, if I tell you I wanna meet you for lunch at Taco Bell, well, there's a couple Taco Bells in the area. If I don't tell you which one I wanna go to, what's the chances that we're gonna end up at the same one, right? So how do we, how do we make sure that we're all saying the same thing and meaning the same thing? Uh, you'll see here are some other tools for success that I wanna invest in or some facilitation skills for our our staff that are gonna take part in this, right? How will they be able to lead conversations in their area? We know that folks trust folks that have similar lived experiences as them. So if I go into a space and I wanna have conversations about this, if I have a partner that knows the work and knows that department and knows the challenges that come along with that work, uh, oftentimes we can have more deeper and meaningful conversations. So I really see this as an opportunity for us to build capacity. And again, going back to equity work happens all the time, not just when Antonio's around. That's really the goal that I wanna push and and Equity and Inclusion Action Team is gonna help us do that. You'll see on your quarterly meetings with the leadership team, I think that's really important for a couple of reasons. One, just that support and connection. They know that it matters to our leadership team, so I wanna bring that those two groups together. And also employee growth, right? How many times does someone get to stand in front of our city manager and give a presentation about the work that they've been doing? Maybe it happens often, I don't know. Uh, or or maybe one of our chiefs, right? How do we make sure that we're giving folks that opportunity to grow as employees? So uh, it's 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 a double bonus in those particular places. Yeah, please.
Okay, so what does equity inclusion mean to you?
Yeah, that's a great question, that's a great question. How much time do you have? Um, I think, uh, when I think about inclusion, to me personally, it means uh, not only are we inviting people to the table, but are we inviting people to the table, making them feel valued, making them feel heard and seen? And a part of our decision-making and investments, right? So I think about government agencies, our biggest resources are our financial investment that we make our budget and then our employee investment, right? Where are we allocating employees and how are we making those employees function for the city? So are we including people in those decisions, right? I think that oftentimes folks in public sector, you come to this work because you care and you wanna make a difference. And um, and so we do everything with that in mind. And and I think the inclusion piece is about sometimes going back to going right to action. We make decisions that we think are really great in the moment, uh, but may not be great for everything that's happening in a community, right? So how do we include folks in that particular piece? And I think equity is about recognizing that that different folks need different things to be able to participate and or to be able to um, be informed and to be engaged and to be connected. And so I I see that responsibility as ours as a government agency to really understand the differences in our communities and thinking about how are we equitably connected, how are we equitably serving? And and then how are we going beyond just kind of that that minimum expectation of saying, hey, you know, we translated our brochures to different languages. Uh, but how are we partnering with leaders in the community to say, yes, we translated these, but also here's something that's gonna impact community and we want you to be a part of this, right? So just recognizing that, um, just using language accessibility as a as an example, right? So I think that's what I think about what I think about equity.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So all that is really laying the foundation and really putting us in place to be able to get to a point where we can create departmental equity and inclusion action plans, right? And um, we have an organizational journey, you saw that, we have a departmental journey, you saw that. We have an individual journey, you saw those things, right? So how are we moving through that process of relationship building and the various points of doing equity and inclusion work? But with intentionality and purpose and the way that we're gonna get there is with these action plans. And those action plans will be different for uh, our parks team maybe compared to our public works team, right? And going back to the idea of equity, right? They have different goals and different strategies and different needs to do their work in a way that's inclusive of all of our community. So uh, we're going to get there and we're gonna focus on starting with our outcomes, right? What do we want to change and or advance and or improve uh, about the service that we deliver every single day to our residents, right? So what does that, what does that end result look like? And how will we measure it? That's about the accountability piece and the transparency. How will we be able to say who's better off and how are they better off, right? And then we back into what are the actions taken to kind of move that work forward? So I'm looking forward to building some of the infrastructure that you all just heard about. And then moving towards a action planning phase that will, I think, really allow us to come back next year and say, this is what we said we wanted to do and this is how we got there. So that's kind of the piece that we're gonna be working towards as we move to our equity and inclusion work. So I've said a lot along the way and I really wanna lift up that my partners here that you'll hear from in a second have been doing a lot of really good stuff already. And I think it's important that we that we celebrate that. As we get ready to hear from those folks though, I wanna share with you all that I s- I told you in the beginning that I see our equity and inclusion work really as as our community aspirations work, it's embedded into it, right? How are we doing that work equitably and inclusively? So when you hear from our leaders that have come up here and talked with you today about the really important work that they're doing, they're gonna share with you the community aspiration that their work is connected to and how they're doing that in an equitable and inclusive way. So um, with that said, I'd love to invite our uh, fire partners up to talk a little about some of the work that they're doing. So Neo's gonna come up and chat with us.
Evening council, it's fun to be here this evening and uh, a little different topic than we normally get to have conversations about. So um, as we continue our focus on the fire department on equity, uh, we have uh, some key focus areas that we outlined tonight. And we wanna talk a little bit about how uh, these particular areas for us are really focused on connecting with the community before they have to call nine-one-one and laying some foundational work for relationships that uh, sort of instill a level of confidence with the community that gives them a face to the name, uh, not just the fire department, but who's behind the fire department so that uh, when they pick up the telephone, they know that they're going to get someone they know um, and someone that's uh, you know, equally capable of meeting their needs. And so as we look at that, um, some of the areas that we highlight are our health outreach and we've been working sort of continuously and I'll say a little bit tirelessly to uh, focus on some of our health outreach presentations and we spend a lot of time working with our senior community living facilities uh, and trying to reach out to them and and bringing some um, you know, life safety and health-focused presentations to them that focus on their needs specifically. So one of the areas that uh, oftentimes comes up is uh, cooking fires with elderly folks. So we talk about how you can prevent those things, how you can uh, maybe take care of some of the more common injuries that we see related to our elderly population from slips to falls. Uh, and so we bundle those presentations and we take them out to the communities, they've been immensely successful. Uh, and we're really, really pleased with that continued partnership that we've had. Uh, in addition to that, we've taken our hands-only CPR program that we've done in the firehouse for the last several years, which has been really successful and we've taken that mobile. Uh, so we've done a couple of uh, hands-only CPR presentations out in the community, trying to find ways to connect with the community where they're at. Uh, and maybe bringing that learning opportunity just a little bit closer to to the residents and and the folks in the community who need that as well. Uh, we've continued our work with our Fridays with Firefighters, I've seen several of the council members over at the firehouse so far this year. Uh, and we appreciate you guys stopping by, it's a lot of fun to have you come and take part in those activities. I think you've all seen the the level of participation from the community at those events. Um, our June one was probably the most well-attended since our very first uh, Fridays with Firefighters event. Uh, and then this one we just had last week was equally popular with the weather and uh, the kids wanting to play in the water, so. Uh, shameless plug, we have one last one this summer coming up on Friday, August ninth. So if anybody wants to join us, we'll be uh, we'll be doing that again as well and and hoping to uh, kick off the end of summer with with the community as well. As we focus on recruitment and hiring, this has been um, certainly an opportunity for the fire department to to spend some time focusing on um, our equity and and inclusion. And so we started a little over a year ago, our Fire Cadet Program. Uh, we're really pleased with how this program's been working. Uh, over the course of the last year, we've hired two of our newest full-time firefighters out of our Fire Cadet Program um, and have been just exceptionally pleased with how they have gone through that program, how they've gone through their training, uh, how they represented the community and the fire department. And then as they've taken their role as full-time firefighters, how they've uh, brought their unique perspectives and backgrounds to uh, our department, but also to the community. And it's been a really great uh, opportunity for us and we're really excited to continue that work. Uh, we have two fire cadets, uh, you can see Paige and Alyssa up on the screen right now. Um, they have just finished up their firefighter training, uh, they're both doing very well with uh, sort of learning the ropes of the fire service and getting their feet wet, if you will, and have been great additions. And so we're uh, looking forward to the opportunities uh, for those two as well. And then on the far left-hand side of the screen there is Ali and he's one of those two uh, individuals that we've been able to bring onboard as full-time firefighters over the course of the last year. And if you've met Ali, uh, he brings a special positive attitude that uh, I say he's like a unicorn and we're super, super excited to have him on the team and very pleased with uh, with all that he's brought to the fire department. Um, in addition to our Fire Cadet Program, uh, a little over two years ago, we reestablished our Fire Explorers Post. And uh, we've seen some really positive interactions with the uh, the students and the youth who've been participating. We sort of stretched the age gap for that. Um, so we've had some kids who are in middle school all the way up to um, sophomores, juniors and seniors in high school. And uh, we've got a group of a little over a dozen students who are here uh, twice a month with us. And uh, in the summer times, we're doing some ride-alongs with the crews to get a little better picture of what the fire service is like. But uh, what a great group of kids and uh, we're really looking forward to trying to bring them down. There's a a competition at uh, the State Fair on Fire Safety Friday. And so we're hoping that either this year or next, it's kind of our goal is to get them back to that competition and have them be a part of that with all of the Fire Explorer Posts in Minnesota. It's a a really great opportunity and it really gives them something sort of to focus on as they're going through the year doing their training and learning a little bit more about the fire service. Couple of areas, uh, as we look at things that are coming up for us. So we've got Ashes and she was here, I think everybody saw her on her way in. She's been a a great addition to the fire department, not only from her primary goal, which is serving our firefighters and their mental health, um, but also a great conversation starter as she's been out in the community with us. And I know that I have run into council members and uh, um, just a ton of community members. She really opens a door of communication that um, I didn't even expect when we started the program with her. And so it's been really enjoyable to to have sort of a tool that um, maybe it's a commonality that we all find in loving pets, but uh, really opening a door and sort of drawing people into that conversation and dialogue with us and establishing that relationship. So um, just a great positive piece uh, to the whole Ashes program that we really didn't see coming. And uh, it's been a lot of fun to work with that as well. And uh, we've also been starting a relationship with Trellis. Uh, so Trellis is an organization that helps uh, folks who might have, in our case, might be high utilizers of our services. Um, so someone who we are seeing sort of a continual recurrence of calling nine-one-one and and maybe having something that we can see, you know, there's there may be just starting to have some uh, increased falls or slips or uh, maybe they need some help locating food on a regular basis. Um, with the permission of the of the folks that we are visiting with, we can refer them to Trellis and then Trellis can support their needs that they might have uh, to help them find some sustainable path forward and and meet the needs where they're at. Uh, which is a couple of things, does a couple of things for us and for uh, those individuals. One, it helps them to find the right solution to their problems as opposed to sort of the one-size-fits-all which is dial nine-one-one, get an ambulance, go to the hospital and then sort of rinse and repeat that process. Um, it can really help them get that key service that might help them stop getting into that circle and find what they need to help continue that sustainable path forward for them. Um, and then one of the things that we're kind of evaluating and trying to find the right fit for is our mobile Fridays with Firefighters. And so a couple of years ago, uh, we took Fridays with Firefighters on the road and we took it to several of the parks around the community. I had a lot of success right away with it, uh, we saw a little bit lighter turnout last year. And so we're kind of looking at how can we pivot that into um, sort of seeing the success that we were seeing or making sure that if we're doing that, um, maybe the the participation is down because our participation back at the firehouse is up. And so just trying to figure out, is that the right fit? And if so, how and where can we bring that to continue its success? So any questions with what the fire department's up to? Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to make one comment, I think your outreach is really paying off because I don't, when I door knock, people consistently talk very positively about our fire department. The other thing I like is your cadet program because what's good is it's good for people to see people that look like them when someone comes to the door. So I just wanted to mention that because I appreciate that work.
Thank you, we uh, again, we're very excited about the cadet program. Um, you know, when we started it, you know, we do what we're going to see out of it, but the program has been very successful and the interest has been, uh, I will say, very robust, uh, as we've done our hiring processes for it. So uh, very continue, very excited to see that continue and then potentially expand as we continue in the forward.
Really like that you're hitting all kinds of age groups too. You know, from the very young to the very old and everything in between, that's really nice.
Yeah, it's really easy um, for us to sort of get focused on our most common um, sort of uh, patients or or folks that we give care to, which is uh, very commonly our elderly population. Uh, so it's, I think it's important, much like you said, to stay focused that there is a broad group of of folks that we need to engage across the community too. Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you. You're already here, so we'll invite you right on up, we appreciate you. So our police partners.
Good evening, um, I'm gonna keep uh, mine relatively short just because I think you, a lot of the programs that we're doing within the police department, you've probably read about another RCA's or we've discussed or even earlier tonight, you got to hear from uh, career outreach workers. So tried to narrow it down to kind of some of the things that we wanted to highlight. Obviously, the equity work is something that's been at the core of what the police department has done, especially since twenty twenty. And really you have found a lot of different ways to carry that forward and have it really become kind of the foundation and and as as um, earlier explained, kind of weaving it into everything we do. But kind of the uh, few things I'm gonna highlight today, uh, first one is our homeless outreach and you heard about that earlier uh, today. It's not just the prevention, but it's also how do we find people that are unhoused, how do we get them to resources? What we're finding is there's so many barriers, there's a lot of programs out there, but if you don't have a driver's license, you might not be able to apply for any of those programs. And so we're really meeting people and getting them those resources so that they can apply for housing. So it's, it's kind of unique, there's a lot of like, hey, go to our website and find resources, but we're actually saying, we'll drive you to the DMV and we're gonna get you a license today and then I'll drive you down here and we can uh, apply for this housing. So a lot of unique things um, being done in that. Um, we were able to get grant funding for another three years, which is really exciting um, to continue that work. Then we've also had some donations from the community, both from our faith community and from community members that will be bringing forward some recognition uh, here in the next uh, month on that. Next that I'll highlight is just our uh, co-response with our mental health workers. Uh, this really was made possible with the the council support uh, with the CAT team and then being able to get uh, funding through ARPA and now we're looking at some grants to continue it. It really started as they were more kind of following up on cases and we've really been able to build that capacity to do co-response when appropriate. So it's not uncommon, we hear an address come out um, over the radio and our social workers are already on their way out the door to meet the officers there. So really focusing on those high utilizers and also family support, doing a lot to support families. Um, again, this, the system can be really hard to navigate for families, they reach out for help and they just feel like they get roadblocks. I feel like we've got social workers in place now that can help them figure out that path forward. We'll talk a lot about the cadet program and our pathways to policing because I think you have all seen it a number of times in different RCA's, but really has been successful in um, our hiring. We're still a little bit short-staffed, but we do project to be fully staffed um, here in hopefully by September. And that that really is because of our internships, our cadet being able to fund tuition. It really has uh, been successful. We just hired two of our uh, two officers who started as paid interns and then worked their way up and we've got two more that we expect to hire in September on that same path. As far as moving forward, a a big thing that we just put in for is accreditation. We put in for that grant that would allow us to put the resources in uh, to get accredited. That's uh, done across the country, but relatively new to Minnesota. It's just, it's such an expensive um, expensive thing to do nationally, but they're through a grant, they're bringing it to Minnesota and we hope that we get that grant and then can uh, make accreditation happen. We did a lot with our policies a couple of years ago during our whole revamp of our policy manual, but I think now it's kind of opened the hood and let's really take a look at all of our policies, our procedures and see what's working for our community and what isn't working. So fingers crossed, we did get that grant application submitted and hopefully we'll find out. Um, if we don't get it, we'll continue to look for funding sources to take on that capacity. And then just continuing to find outreach opportunities in the community. Uh, Tom Pitzl, our Community Relations Coordinator is doing a lot in actually getting out and and we're doing a lot with the faith community right now and working with our multicultural advisory committee and getting more people involved. Especially people that maybe we've never heard from, maybe don't know much about the police department. So kind of a pitch for if there's uh, folks watching or you know of somebody that would be a good fit, we really wanna kind of re-energize and get our uh, Mac up and running once kind of summer winds down and people are around a little bit more. So that's kind of the the quick update of some of the highlights of the police department.
You know, actually I wanted to go back to your comment about door knocking. One thing I, every time I go out door knocking, I bet it's close to a hundred percent of people love the police in Roseville. So it just shows the work that you've been doing in the community on all levels that people are are appreciating, respecting and really supporting. And so that is so nice, that doesn't happen easily. Especially, you know, you know, what's happened over the last five years or so that, you know, to have that much support for the police in our community says a lot on all the work that you guys are doing, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll make sure to pass that along, it's good to hear.
I just wanted to thank you for um, the work with the high schoolers and students. I know that's really impactful, I I think that's a photo there of um, maybe some work with students and it says a lot that it's a very um, diverse, uh, in many different ways, uh, group of people and and that the, I don't think overall that you maybe would find such positive feelings about the police department in um, a wide variety of young people, so it says a lot. And I also just wanted to give a shout-out to Tom Pitzl for um, seeing him at every event, the all summer and
He just wants to drive that Ranger. That's the only reason.
He's not sending someone else, he's actually there and he's engaging with people and his full, he's there the whole- He's not sending someone else. He's actually there and he's engaging with people and his full, he's there the whole time. He's fully engaged. And I really appreciate, you know, we've had a couple of different really good people, but he's found a way to connect with people in a way that is uniquely him. And so I appreciate what he's able to bring to that table. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And again, I'm very, very thankful and proud to be able to say that we have our CAT team and know that, you know, whatever we can do to make sure that we continue to move forward with whatever, the housing study, whatever it is, however we figure out how that fits because it's, it's, it says a lot about who we are and what we value.
She and I had, I made her talk to me for like a half hour just the other day. Very supportive of what she's doing. I agree with everything that's been said.
I liked your comment when you, actually the example of removing barriers, that's so important to have. You know, when you say, tell a story like that, it sticks with us and I think the public much more than just statistics or data. So I think that's really good. Yeah. People like the police department. And if they don't at the door, usually if they say something negative about police, I say, no, are you talking about Roseville police? Well, no, that was something I saw on the news and I'm like, okay, let's talk about the Roseville police. A little bit of education to you for you there and then I can do my presentation on that.
Anyway, Jesse comes up about county roads versus city roads. Exactly. So thank you for all the work.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
They're ready. Look at this. They're just on it like.
I don't even say anything.
They're excited.
They're in the inner eye, right?
They want to leave.
They're just so excited to talk.
I had scheduled, that's why.
Yeah. So Public Works, just going to update you guys on a few items that we've done, a few new items and a few kind of modifications of stuff we did in the past. So pathways, as normal, we installed a few new pathways last year. We did three segments. The one I'd really like to highlight is the one on Marion Street. This was kind of phase two, but in a very high density, connected to a lot of, connected both parks and some schools on the St. Paul side, but an area town that really benefits a lot of people who don't have motorized vehicles. The other initiative we did, which was kind of newer, was we did get involved with Ramsey County's bench program. So we did install seven benches kind of around the Lexington Woodhill area where we have a lot of senior housing, but trying to make it more friendly or more easier to walk around for especially the elderly. So something that we will look into doing that in the future as well. Otherwise, the other typical thing we've done with a lot of our PMP projects is curb ramp upgrades. So we did continue that. That's something we'll always keep doing as we do any mill and overlays, but last year I think we did about eight ramps and I'm sure this year is probably about a similar amount. Otherwise, in terms of safe infrastructure and snow plowing, we did our pilot project a few years ago. I think that was done three years ago. We started with one. The map only shows five, but we actually have six locations. We did add two last year, both on the east end of town, one on Marion Street where we did that sidewalk project and the other by Woodbridge. We didn't have a very good test year because we didn't have a lot of snow. So we're still considering a pilot. Part of that is, good or bad, we haven't had a lot of feedback on this process, but you know, basically we're allowing residents to park on the street and then flip flop flops so they don't, they have a spot, a place to park. Because a lot of times parking's, there's not enough parking by apartment buildings. But it's generally been success, but we know there's a little bit of confusion. It's not operated perfectly, but it has provided residents a way to at least allow to park and still to maintain a safe travel way. So we'll continue to look to see if we expand that in the future. There are other areas in town. We can't necessarily do it at all locations, but we'll, we'll still continue to look at that going forward. One of the other big studies that we're just wrapping up is the County Road B and Snelling Avenue pedestrian study. So probably the busiest pedestrian crossing on probably the busiest road in Roseville. So looking at those results, we can get some feedback and hopefully look for grants or work with MINDOT over the county because since we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, but look to improve pedestrian safety. There's some short term things that we can, we can do at that intersection to make it safer for pedestrians. But a lot of that'll be some longer term stuff that we can look to incorporate as, as projects come up and, and funding as well. And then kind of the other initiative, which we're kind of midway through is our bike plan, looking to open up that mode of transportation and kind of expand on the pathway master plan that we have. The pathway master plan, although it's very good and detailed, doesn't specifically address bikers very detailed. So this will hopefully expand that and make it a little more detailed on how we want to get folks that use that mode of transportation throughout the community. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that council may have on any, anything we've done or any plans we have in the future.
Ms. Schroeder.
Yes, I actually wanted to comment, and I think I've talked about this before, is your snow plowing. You guys do such a great job with the sidewalks and the roads and everything. I get so many compliments from other city, people who live in other cities say, I always know when I get into Roseville because of the great snowplow. But the other side of that, what I really like is I see a lot of people in wheelchairs and with strollers out in the winter time trying to navigate through our sidewalks and the parks. And it's, they're such a good job that people are able to do that. And so a lot of kudos for that. It seems like a simple thing, but it's amazing if you have any kind of thing you're pushing or pulling or trying to get through in the winter time, especially if you're in a wheelchair, that is really something. So thank you for doing that. And I do get a lot of comments about that as well. So thank you.
That's my brand. Thank you. You mentioned kind of learning how it's going with the, every other side plowing. We did a pretty, pretty good job of, right before we implemented this, we had a plan, then we went out and engaged folks and learned that what we were doing wasn't the best idea. And I'm wondering if we should be doing something similar to look back and are we, are we meeting our goals? Kind of what you talked about, Mr. Montez, being able to look back and say, who are we affecting and is it positive or neutral or negative? I wonder if that's, that's an opportunity for us to look back and use a similar process that we use to improve the program or adjust the program and see if we actually did make it work for folks.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We did both years. We, even the areas we had previously done, we re notified everyone, re gave over instructions. It's amazing when you send out 1,200 letters and you hear nothing. So it's just really odd. Usually you hear something either for or against and it's been very neutral. But you know, we do, I know our operators, as they're, as they're out plowing, they've generally heard good things. Certainly some confusion, but I think that's going to happen anytime. And that's, it's always going to be an education thing no matter what because there tends to be more turnover in those areas. So you know, residents might only live there one year and then move to another location. So it's always going to be a re-education, but that's certainly something we can follow up and see if we can solicit more feedback.
I appreciate that. And do we have partnerships with the owners of the building?
Yep. So we.
Working as, thinking about how to make sure education works for each new person as they move in.
Yep. So we, we, when we send out letters, we kind of do two letters, one to tenants and then one with property managers. We certainly work with property managers to encourage them. The smaller locations, we had more success because the property managers know their tenants a lot more versus some of the larger areas. It's a little more difficult. I know when you got 300 different tenants, it's a little harder to communicate. You don't know them maybe on a first name basis. But we do try to work with them to help them encourage, to understand the rules or, you know, let us know how we can help, stuff like that. So and, and they've generally been very receptive. I know the one on Woodbridge, when we set, we first saw the signs, that they, they saw that the property manager called us within like two hours of the signs going up. Because they were worried like, well, what are you guys doing here? And then when we explained it, they're like, oh, that's great. Because they knew it was going to be such a benefit to their tenants. And then we didn't grow up to really see how it worked for that area because we never have a snowstorm, which is, which is fine. So if we don't have to have them at an event like that, that works.
When I think about that, I think now I haven't rented an apartment for a few years now, but you get your apartment, they give you this packet, here's the information you need. Is that kind of information part of that? Is there ongoing education that the apartment owners can be doing and partnering with us in November of each year? That kind of partnership is something.
Yeah. And I, we'll certainly do that again. We'll reach out and we can definitely encourage that. Make sure that's in your welcome packet or what, or whatnot that they hand out.
Thank you.
Well, as someone who paid $179 to get their car out of the impound lot in Minneapolis last for street sweeping, but I think it's really important that for people maybe new to this conversation to know that one of the parts of this snow plowing thing is to, to try to avoid towing cars of people who are poor. Because really it's just an extra tax on people who are poor or people who maybe don't have the means. So that it might be one of the most depressing places in the world is to be at the tow place because people don't know how they're actually going to get that car and they can't go to work then and they can't take care of their kids and everything else. So I think it's just really important to share that not, by having an opportunity for people to park somewhere else, we're, we're taking away that, you know, that extra towing fee and getting to the, taking a day off of work to get to the impound lot to find it. And, you know, is it even in good shape? Did it get smacked up on its way there and whatever? So I think just reiterating that, that really is an equity piece for people by giving an opportunity for them to still park near their home, not get towed, not have to put that extra, come up with whatever fee that is. And, you know, so I just think it's really important and I really had wished I wasn't in Minneapolis.
Good points. I think that one of the things Mr. Freyhammer said is we, we need to stress that some of the work we do is on county roads and on state highways and we have to, or state roads, and we have to work with them to do that. Because quite often I get comments from the public saying, well, why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that? And I'm going, well, we have input, but we do not get to decide on those things. And there are many roads that are, as you know, as you know very well. So that's just a point I wanted to make, educational piece. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Freyhammer. Excellent.
Invite Janice up to come hang out with us.
There we go.
Oh, she's spent a lot of time up here.
I see.
This is Community Development Director, Janice Gunlock. I forgot to do that in the last one. So make sure the public knows.
So thank you. We had a couple of different groupings of initiatives we wanted to talk about briefly. The first one was quality housing. Obviously, we were here in front of the EDA earlier talking about this. There's a couple of items up there. I wanted to go way back to 2021. The summer of 2021, we did a bunch of virtual sessions, engagement sessions with the public before we started the zoning code update process. One of those sessions related to racial equity and inclusion. And we held the session not necessarily knowing fully what we would hear from the public, but we wanted to provide a forum under which people could make comments. And you'll note from the notes that were taken at this session, almost all of the comments related to housing, affordable housing, different types of housing. It wasn't a total surprise, given a lot of the engagement that was done with the comprehensive plan, talked about missing middle housing. But given that, it sort of fed into the zoning code update that was ultimately approved. One of the larger items that was done was to expand upon two family housing units that were allowed in the single family zoning district. I want to note, I think we've done two duplexes when normally only a single family home could have been done. So it really has amounted to gentle density. But a lot of that informed some of those zoning code update projects tied back to equity and inclusion initiatives. Also the Land Trust partnership with Habitat. I think we've closed on a handful of homes, but we have another sort of handful in the pipeline. This map doesn't come up really super great, but the blue ones are the ones that have been acquired. Oh, good, on the site, you can see it better. The new construction is a, is a twin home and then there's some other homes that haven't officially been placed with a family, but they, they are, they are in the partnership. The other one I wanted to highlight is we do have a first generation down payment assistance program. Our very first Land Trust home, the person who was placed in that home actually was a recipient of one of the first generation down payment assistant loans. So those are really working the way that we intended. And then the last item under quality housing, I, we did want to highlight Just Deeds. We were at the Juneteenth event and I was actually kind of surprised at how much interest people still had in Just Deeds. I had a bunch of brochures about all of our housing programs and nobody really wanted to talk about that. Everyone wanted to talk about Just Deeds. We actually ran into a couple of people, one family in particular stuck out at me where they actually found out at that event, looking at that map, that there was a racial covenant against their property. And so we were continuing to participate in Just Deeds and giving people the avenues to get those covenants discharged. And that's something that we'll continue to work on. The other item related to quality businesses, we're continuing our partnership with the Rice and Larpinder Alliance. There's a business component to that as well. And that is our most racially diverse, diverse area in the community. So we'll continue to participate in that effort. And then this photo here is Thomas and Mercedes Jackson. They own and opened Par 365. They were the first business that received one of our small business loans. They also were a recipient of several services that we offered through our Choose Roseville program. And so if you haven't been to Par 365, it's kind of a fun business and they're a really great couple with a lot of energy. And it's a great business that I'm happy to say that the EDA and the city has contributed to their success, we hope. In terms of upcoming initiatives, we were just here talking about that housing needs assessment. We think there's some potential there to do some new and innovative things that speak to equity on the housing side, but I don't know fully what that's going to be. We'll learn as we go through the process, but that's probably the biggest item that's upcoming on our initiatives docket. But that's all I have. No questions for me?
Oh, well, you've been up here before.
Yeah. We've already given you questions.
Just waiting for Matt.
We saved him off for him.
Thank you, council. And I, I spent the better part of the afternoon here trying to condense this. So I'll be as brief as I can while also making sure I highlight the work the team is really doing on this. The first couple of items I want to touch on are likely not new to the council, but are things that we're beginning to see really impactful, tangible data on. The first is our Reach for Resources program. And if you'll recall, what Reach for Resources is, is it's a group out of the west metro that actually provides inclusion, inclusive services to participants in our Parks and Recreation programs. So they come out and they train our staff on, our seasonal staff on how to work with people with special needs in our programs, but also on a one-to-one basis, we'll provide support for the programs. Last year was the first year we did it and we had 244 hours of inclusive services utilized, which is a huge, huge impact that impacted, there were 14 children that took advantage. And I, I think our lead guy spoiled my punchline here, but when you read sort of some of this qualitative data of the impact that was had, in a lot of cases, these are simply children that would not have been able to participate in our programs without this. They would not have been able to participate in the way we used to do this previously, which was sort of try to do the best we can to facilitate their participation. And you can see they were able to meaningfully actively participate and receive the benefits. This is now our second year of the program. It's the, so far through the first of July, we have 177 hours signed up for. So we anticipate that this year will be even bigger. And that is inclusion at its very nature, where these again are folks that are benefiting on a very one-to-one level from this service. Another one that we've talked about for years and years, and I'm proud of the, the outcomes we're beginning to see is our fee assistance program. You'll recall this is something that has, Roseville's had going back a long, long time. And historically it had been, you could receive $100 of fee assistance per year. What the data was showing in 2022, as we began to collect data, was a huge percentage of folks that claimed it hit the roof and they would participate in one activity or two activities and then be spent out and wouldn't participate in anymore. So we did increase that rate to $150 max. It's probably still not enough to totally serve everyone, but it, it was a try to see if that improved things. And what we found is the amount of fee assistance claimed in 2023 went from $5,500 in 2022 to $10,200 in 2023. So it, it really doubled. That was great, but obviously if you offer more money, more gets spent. So we weren't totally sure if we'd hit the mark. But last year was the first year we collected racial demographics with this. And we didn't have some fancy software program. It was literally part of the scholarship application. And Kim in our office was hand entering it into a spreadsheet that was data protected. And what we were able to find is that 54% of the people who claimed fee assistance were people of color. And obviously that compares to Roseville having about 30% of people of color. So that means we're not only achieving participation of financially disadvantaged populations, but also historically racially underrepresented populations are participating in our programs. To me, that says that if we can continue to grow this program through greater advertising, greater funding, greater access, this is a great tool to help us make sure that our programs better represent all of Roseville, not just those who have historically participated. Another item I want to talk about, these are more of what Antonio was talking about earlier and I, I really think he's right. And and I I really think he's right. Oh, I think we lost, we might have lost. Oh, I had some good pictures too. Uh-oh. Oh, no. Um, well, uh, well, that's all right. You're gonna have to use your imagination. Yeah, you're gonna have to use your imagination. You don't want me to act up the last one. Uh, I do wanna talk about our project planning, cause this has been a really intentional effort since two uh twenty twenty-two um began. I I've talked about several times with the council, we met two great individuals, Maria and Zolt, who are in wheelchairs. Um, at our opening of the inclusive playground, Central Park Victoria. Since then, every time we have planned a playground, we've reached out to them and said, why don't you come out and provide us feedback? Come to the neighborhood meetings. Um, they've, so that's been three playgrounds that have been planned since then. For the Lexington Playground Replacement, we actually brought them in as part of the interviews with vendors. They got to ask the vendors questions and be involved from that very early stage. The impact of that is simply exactly what you'd think it would be, it's blind spots. Uh, when we were working on the new playground uh on County Road B, it's a relatively small site. It's not able to be the fully inclusive ramped surface. There's climbers and things like that. We brought Maria and Zolt in to that conversation and they looked at our drawings and they said, well, if you just change the orientation here. Sure, people in chairs aren't gonna be able to climb this, but they'll be able to go under this apparatus and still play fully in the experience. That's all we've ever wanted. That's what we couldn't do when we were kids. And it was such an eye-opening experience because our vendor does hundreds of playgrounds. We've obviously worked on a bunch of them and we missed it. And without them coming in and saying, hey, could you just turn this, we would have missed it. And and so we've actively made sure that they were involved in this planning process and really tried to give them more authority and more opportunity to guide planning. And we're really excited um for that Lexington Playground project, which the first neighborhood meeting is next week. And uh but we've already had them involved in the selection of the vendor with that one. The other two items that had, the pictures I'm bummed you aren't gonna see.
I could just try to take the same DMIC.
Well, 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 no, I don't, we know how fickle that can be. Um, is when we talked about uh how we plan our programs on a day-to-day basis. And there's two, two I really wanna highlight, um because they came from others in the staff. So I think five or six years ago, it might have been me saying, now let's remember our equity considerations. And these examples were the opposite. Um, one is we were looking for, we were planning Rosefest and we knew there was a lot of change this year and a lot of sort of going out on a limb. And we were talking about where we were gonna put these events and one of our staff members raised their hands and we were doing our superhero carnival, which is a fairly large event. And really Central Park is the only site that has traditional infrastructure for that, parking, by that I mean. Um, and our staff member said, everything we're doing is in the heart of the city. We gotta get to the east side of the city because that's the more diverse part of the city. And so we talked about it and we said, well, let's try this at Acorn Park. And of course, being uh perfectionists who try to figure how things are gonna go wrong, several of us said, that's really scary. There's not enough parking. It's not big enough for that sort of event. And we said, no, we have to try this because of the equity implications. And we ran the event out there. Um, we had over a thousand people participate at the event. I was there for the event. We didn't have, I didn't have a single person complain about parking and it looked like Roseville. It was, it was a more diverse group than we would have had if we held that event in Central Park, cause that's inherently an event people walk to, they wanna be a part of. So it's moving the needle. It's not, you know, the the Detroit, the Giants triumph, but it was a big win. Um, the other one is as we were planning our entertainment for the party in the park event. Um, Dion Hyder, who books our summer entertainment, was extremely passionate that we needed to try something different. And we needed to book a band that had diverse members, but also played diverse music. Um, this was not to say something that said, you know, this is a specific cultural group, but just something that played music that would appeal across demographics. And so we booked a band called High and Mighty. Um, we went out and raised some sponsorship funds, have a little bit extra to to book them. And I, this is the the picture I'm sad we aren't gonna have because the first time in my entire time here in Roseville, we had.
You guys could act this out.
Yeah, we could, yeah. Um, I've never seen the entire amphitheater. Yeah, there you go. So the entire amphitheater was um filled with people dancing and people across the spectrum. And so it truly did go from a Prince song to uh various, uh across the spectrum of music and it was so much fun. And again, I I'm proud of it because it didn't come from me. It didn't come from Antonio. Came from others in our department who have heard this and said, no, we need to be reflective in how we do it. Um, and then the last anecdote I'm gonna share was just comes from the back of the room. I was just reviewing. We're looking at our natural resources planning, which is in draft. We got this big project list and the consultant sent me a memo on how they're gonna prioritize this. And one of the priorities was underrepresented uh under parks in underrepresented neighborhoods was third on that list. So it's just reflective again of how this is becoming something that we utilize in almost every decision we make. Um, more so than the specific initiatives. And so that's, that's, those are what I had chosen to highlight. Um, couple of upcoming initiatives that I I we don't have on here. One, we talked about Lexington Park. We're also planning to go out for R F P for Recreation Management Software. That will allow us to track demographics of folks who participate in our programs. Um, that's certainly the hope that we'll get a proposal back that can do that. Um, and we're also starting to uh move the, to move towards a needs assessment, similar to what Janice was talking about earlier. That hopefully will allow us to understand the needs of the citi- uh community across demographics. That's what I have.
I just wanna share, I went to the um Dixieland Jazz and it was really lovely because it was um very close to parking. So there was a lot of people who probably weren't able to attend any other event and they were able to park right there. Walk in and their walkers or with their assistants, could have had maybe three times as many chairs. Um, but it was really, it was really lovely. Um, and it was fun to see uh people I've never seen in any other event. Um, from all different age groups, but it was really enjoyable. Kids were rolling around. I'm probably a little too curled to the greens. But um, but it was, it was really lovely. So I appreciate, again, thinking beyond what's always been done and and continuing to change and and adapt. Thank you.
Impressive, very impressive.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Oh, don't worry about it.
Administration.
Now we have Rebecca Olson, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. Um, and I will take full responsibility since I uploaded the PowerPoint. I apologize, Matt.
He just didn't want me to act up the dance.
We wanted you to.
So a couple of things that we wanna highlight from uh my area is our website accessibility and translation. As many of you know, we did a really large project updating our website. It's kind of ongoing. It's stuff that you probably won't see. It's all on the backend. But one of the things that we did, as you know, through the community survey, the main source of information for our community is our newsletter and second is our website. So we wanted to make sure that when people are accessing our website, that they can use the accessibility feature. So we implemented something called User Way. There's a little widget in the top right-hand corner of our website. Looks like a a little person with their arms outstretched. And when you click on it, it gives you a variety of different options that you can use to make the website more accessible. You can increase font, you can increase change contrast, you can look at, um, there's a screen reader. There's also um changing, there's dyslexia friendly um things that you can do on it. So it really makes it uh more accessible. In addition to that, it, that widget has a translation system. But we also have another translation system on the website as well. So it will translate our website into dozens upon dozens of different languages. Because we know not everybody is going to be able to understand some of the stuff that we may have on our website if they're not native English speakers. So those two things have really helped us um improve our website and the accessibility for everybody in our community. And not just our our residents, but I know other people come to our our website as well. Um, in addition, we also updated assisted listening devices here in the council chambers. Um, I don't know that we've had a huge outcry for it, but they had not been updated for I don't even know how long, probably over a decade. So we did update those so that people who may need to use an assisted listening device can now access it. It links directly to your phone. Uh, I don't know all the ins and the outs, but uh it is much better technology for people that may need it. Uh, second thing that's up there is hiring. I think you've heard a lot tonight about the hiring uh for our public safety departments. But the rest of our organization also does a significant amount of hiring throughout the year. It, hiring is huge. It is very, very busy. Um, we uh go through probably close to three thousand applications in a year. Um, and it's, it's really big. So one of the things that we're trying to do is lend some consistency to our process. So we created something called a Hiring Manager Packet. This packet requires uh hiring managers to submit a lot of information prior to us posting a vacancy. Um, what the intent is, they have to pre- preside or present us with a scoring matrix. So that we are making sure that we're scoring on the criteria outlined in the job descriptions. And we're not allowing some of those, trying to mitigate any bias that can come into the hiring process. Um, we also are talking about making sure that in those hiring packets that people are thinking about who's on your interview panels. Prior to even, you know, posting this job, making sure that there is diverse viewpoints. Making sure that um we're being inclusive of everybody in our organization. Think somebody else pointed out that there is opportunity for, you know, even staff development uh participating in this. So we're, we're hitting a couple of different goals here, but making sure that that broader range of viewpoints is reflected in our interview panels. And same with our interview questions. We're really being um very targeted on the questions that we're asking. And making sure that we're asking them in in um a way that is going to get you the best information. The other piece to the Hiring Manager Packet, something that we started doing about a year ago, is after applicants have had an interview, we're sending out a survey to them. One of the things that we started doing as part of this that we had heard is we present most applicants with uh uh interview questions ahead of the interview. There are times when they don't get all of the questions because we wanna be able to make sure that they can answer some on the fly. But for the most part, we want them to be prepared, um be able to do their research. And then what we do is after they have their interview, we send them a survey and ask them a variety of questions. Uh, one of the questions that we ask is, were you aware of our commitment to equity and inclusion? And um was this a factor or I don't remember the specific language, but does it impact, um was it important to you in your decision to apply? And at the beginning, when we first started asking this question, we saw that, you know, every once in a while we'll get a, yes, we were aware of it. But most, for the most part, it was no or kind of or whatever. Um, and then same with the response related to was it important to you? However, as time has gone on, we're seeing more and more people who are saying, yes, I was aware of your commitment to equity and inclusion. And yes, it's very important to me. And that really demonstrates that when you can create this culture, you're going to get people who are aware of it, word spreads. Um, and then those are values that they find in the the hiring field. So we're continuing to improve on that. That's, that's, like I said, a a really huge undertaking. Um, all of the department heads have been really instrumental in helping implement this throughout the organization. So I wanna throw kudos to all of them because they're really the ones when it comes to hiring that that um take the brunt of it. Um, I won't touch too much on the class and comp study. You were all very highly involved in that. But really, um, that was an opportunity for us to really review job descriptions, to make sure that all positions don't have unnecessary requirements related. So that it could limit a hiring pool. Um, we looked at um making sure that we have that equitable pay and job classification throughout all city departments. Uh, and then the next item on there, the impact summaries for council agenda items. I I will touch a little bit on it, um but the, these are items that we're still learning and growing with. But the intent is to make sure that um as we present options to you as the the decision makers. That you have all the information that you need. Um, and especially to make sure that you have the information on how proposals could impact various communities throughout, throughout Roseville. Um, and then making sure that equity is a consideration as part of those decision-making uh uh processes. Uh, equity language and requests for proposals. I know uh Matt talked about the Lexington Park. And uh we're starting to look at how do we incorporate some of the values related to our community aspirations. When we're asking for people to help us achieve the goals that we're getting at. Um, so we've included uh questions on, you know, um. Um, I'm, I'm, might get the language wrong, so I apologize, Matt. But like one of them was, you know, making sure that we're um putting the historically underrepresented populations at the forefront of what we're doing. So how do they do that or are they aware of those those considerations? So we're including s- specific items in our requests for proposals. Um, we did that with the Envision Roseville Culture Brokers, even with um our legal attorney, R F P as well. And we know that the economic impact of our, the, these contracts are really in um can have a large disparity. When you talk about different ways that um government contracts can impact different communities. Last on here is our community relations messaging. I think throughout this, this presentation, you've seen a lot of things that reflect some of the things that our community relations team has been doing. Um, we talked about the sponsorship for Rosefest that um really helped us um increase some accessibility for people. So our community relations team has been helping with that. They help with some of the design and um developing Q R codes for things like on the bike plan. Um, they've helped with some of our hiring processes as well. But I think the other piece to that is, I know Antonio's talked about relationships and how equity work is really um built upon relationships. And so they're doing a lot of these micro communications. They're out there, they are trying to connect with people within our community, to bring in that community voice in the stories that they tell. They're doing some real good intentional storytelling through our newsletter. They're working with various community groups like the Historical Society, Duke of Roseville, Roseville, um Alzheimer's and dementia. And really just getting all that information pulled together so that we have uh relationships that we are building. And um continuing to lay that foundation. So when things come up, it's similar to, um, I don't remember who said it, but you know who to call and you aren't, uh. It's not a blank face. Um, so with that, uh I'll, the upcoming initiatives, we talked a little bit about, uh I'm not gonna go too in-depth in those. Since we kinda touched on some of it. Um, the only other thing I would say is we'll continue on our hiring practices, cause that is, that is one of the the main things that we do is our hiring. It is, it is busy, um but we're gonna continue to provide some guidelines, some processes for our hiring managers. As well as look at making sure that we're all on the same page of understanding. So whether that is training for people who sit on interview panels or what, but that will be a continuous. It's, it will probably continue to evolve throughout, throughout our time here, so that's what I have.
Yes, thank you for for that update. Um, one thing I did wanna comment was on the impact statement, and I think you've heard this from me before. We call it the racial equity impact summary. And I would really like to see that expanded to include, I think it needs to be inclusive of all the different groups involved. So, you know, even just the way that's worded, I think it needs to be maybe equity impacts summary or something like that. So then, cause the way you're talking about, like with Matt's talking about some of the peoples, he and how that's affecting those groups. That's not reflected in that statement, so I would like to see that expanded, so.
And and I would say, I think in some cases, the content that goes in there is expanded. So we probably just need to match the the title of it in the system, so.
That would be great. Thank you.
Uh, question on the website, um accessibility. Has that been put out there so people actually know what that widget means or how how would they know that that would access?
Uh, you know, that's a good question. I don't know that we've done any major um push on that. But uh we we absolutely could. I think there's a general, I don't know if we can, oh, we don't have it. You can't really see it. Um, if you're looking at it, when, if you have concerns, it's a very general looking widget. That kind of is similar to um the handicap signs that you hang on your.
Oh, I.
Your, your um car. But again, people may or may not know, so that's a, that's a good point to.
I started an email to Cory.
If you know, you might, if you maybe regularly use it, it might.
Nice little pop-up might be like a thing, tool to have at least for a little while.
It doesn't work in my old mobile.
Oh, so just.
We wanna get the word out that we are doing it and we want people that would use it to be able to find it.
Yeah, when you hover on it, it does say accessibility menu on your computer.
All these different options. The options are fantastic. Yeah, it is, it's really good work.
I had people comment on bef- previously that we, ours was not.
And and that was part of why we we did the website update is because we were out of compliance with some of the federal accessibility standards, so.
Thank you.
So we shared a lot today. Uh, I just wanted y'all to take three key takeaways from this, right? This is that our organization has a long-range equity and inclusion plan. And I want you all to feel empowered and supported to be able to talk about it as you're out talking with the folks in the community. And you're talking about the work that we're doing here. I want you to know that this is the direction that we're going. If you have questions or you wanna sit down for a coffee, I'm willing to do that. Just talk about, you know, why is this work important to us and how are we gonna continue to do it? Second, our departments are doing really great work. It's really important that, I know they got a lot going on. They're always like serving community, um, but they're doing that with equity and inclusion at the forefront. And we're going to continue to do that as an organization, so I want to know that. And then the third thing is I'm just excited to partner with you all in the community on this really important work as we move forward. So that's what the future looks like. With that, I hope y'all don't have any, but we can take some questions. Been asking moderator to the folks.
Questions for anybody. I kind of asked mine as we went along.
I know, me too.
It's exactly how I wanted it to go, so that's great.
Your plan worked.
With that said, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done.
So next on our agenda, we received the preliminary 2025. Should we take a break? Oh, I did, no, I did. Does anyone want to take a five-minute break? Sounds like. Okay, we'll take a short break. Sorry, sorry for that. Back from our short break and we will continue with our agenda. Next on the agenda, we have, um, Finance Director Michelle Petrick. The preliminary.
That time of the budget process where you get your first look at the draft capital improvement plan for 2025 to 2044.
Fun plan.
And me and technology.
I was going to say, wow.
Be forewarned, we don't get along real well. Big score, probably. Okay. It stopped, so. So we're going to review the, um, 20-year summary and we're going to look at some preliminary funding strategies. And then we'll look at a handful of funds that we've talked about for the last three or four years that continue to need additional funding. But first, what is a capital improvement plan? It is a long-term plan for replacing the city's infrastructural, infrastructure, facilities, vehicles and equipment. An infrastructure is under the ground or on top of the ground, pavement, sidewalks, water, sewer pipes. It includes the assets necessary to maintain our city programs and services. Key assumptions that went into this plan are that city programs will remain at current service levels. There were certain assumptions about asset lifespans and replacement costs. We've, um, had the finance commission look at how we replace assets and they concurred with how we do replace them. Generally, we have a schedule for every asset, but we will replace them at the optimal time when factors such as maintenance costs and resale value are looked at. And what you may see is a certain vehicle may not have maintenance issues and we're able to hold on to it for a few more years. Or you may see a vehicle that should be held for another five or six years having mega maintenance issues. So we have to bring it forward. New this year, um, there is a decrease in the total expenditures over the 20 years of $5.9 million. But there's a lot of assets that are not programmed in 2044. So I would say roughly it stays the same. No drastic changes over 20 years, other than our costs do increase. Other changes, uh, for funding of five funds, we are proposing a transfer from the excess cash reserve fund for the police vehicle and equipment fund, public works vehicle and equipment fund, parks and recreation vehicle and equipment fund, the streetlight maintenance fund and the pathway and parking lot maintenance fund. Total use from the excess cash reserve fund is $525,000. We originally started the CIP with a potential tax levy increase, but after discussion, the city manager and I concluded that the use of the excess cash reserve fund was a better solution for 2025. However, there will need to be in future years increases in tax levies or other financing. So the 20-year CIP, um, the majority of the capital is in the water and sewer area. Streets and pathways is next. And then facilities, parks and recreation and public safety. In the water and sewer area is both the infrastructure and the equipment. And streets and pathways, you kind of know what those are. On average, we spend about, oh, just under $11 million for the current 20-year plan. You can see from this chart the breakdown between vehicles, equipment, furniture and fixtures, buildings and improvements. Some items fall into buildings that might be considered infrastructure. Like when you're looking at the oval, it's hard to decide, is it a building or an infrastructure item? This chart represents the full CIP, all funds, tax-supported, fee-supported, governmental and enterprise funds. And you will see that we do not have a full 10 years of funding within the CIP. We have nine years of funding as a whole. However, certain funds cannot be used in other areas. The enterprise funds, which are the water and sewer, storm, sanitary sewer, recycling, those funds cannot be used in a tax-supported fund, community development. Their resources cannot be used in any other fund except their fund. So that's kind of where the current 20-year plan is at. So some of the funding strategies I already mentioned that we use did targeted use of excess cash reserve funds. And for 2025, um, the rate increases for, for utility funds will factor in the current capital improvement plan for water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. And Ellers is currently working on updating, um, the utility rate study. We will continue searching for alternative revenue sources in the stormwater infrastructure fund. There aren't a lot of sources out there, but that one, this particular fund needs on average, a little over $2 million annually. Public Works has been able to restrict, restrict their capital projects to the funding that's available and will be ramping up the needed expenditures in the future. Future funding strategies, um, we need, will need to consider increasing property taxes either directly into these funds or through debt levies and consider issuance of debt to fund long-lived capital assets. Not short-term equipment, but generally you want to bond for items that are going to last longer than the debt service. So those are some future strategies to consider. Additional considerations. The CIP should be considered in conjunction with the operating budgets. Programming comes are dependent on both. And the city manager's recommended budget will contain the 2025 capital expenditures. So the first year of the CIP will be part of the total budget that is presented on August 19th. The preliminary budget and, um, CIP and tax levy, um, is scheduled for approval on the 23rd of September. We have to certify a preliminary, preliminary levy by September 30th to Ramsey County. Preliminary levy can always go down, it cannot go up. With that, I'm done with my presentation.
Mr. President?
Yes, uh, thank you, Captain Mayor Roth. Um, just, uh, one note, uh, maybe two things, but, uh, one note in regards to the recommendation to use existing fund balance to fund the needed capital improvements. Um, that certainly is not something, um, I like to do. Would like to make something more sustainable. Uh, however, we have a fairly substantial balance in the cash reserve fund. Uh, I think it's a bit closer to 900,000. I would caution not using all of that. Uh, we do have, uh, potential of needing to shore up our general fund. Uh, by the end of the year, we'll see how the year goes on that. As you know, um, for ongoing costs, you don't necessarily want to use one-time money because you do have to make that up. So if we're going to use reserves either for one-time costs, and you'll see in my budget, I'll try to leverage that as much as possible and/or something that is more capital long-term. So, um, while it will help us this year, it's something that we're really going to have to pay attention to in, uh, future years. I just want to acknowledge that. That's my proposal in front of you, um, as we go through the budget process. The second thing is you may notice that, that big chart of us going down over a period of time. That's pretty hard to stay positive over a 20-year period, uh, but we've looked better in the past. And, uh, if you looked at the charts here, uh, in the packet, you'll notice, uh, really based off discussion last year that we did not add any future levy increases that haven't been agreed to, uh, or, um, approved, um, up to this point. So in the past, we've shown you charts with, well, if we give another hundred thousand in this, in this particular fund, that's going to help it look better. I, I just want to call that out so you know it, it doesn't include any future levy increases. I think there is room for conversation around that. And I think collectively, if we have some thoughts and kind of a plan of how we want to do it, I think that's great. We just wanted to show you kind of the stripped-down version, if nothing else was done on where we're at. We obviously look at these things every single year and make recommendations and we'll have to tweak that continually on that. And while you can't find future councils, obviously I think having a plan in place can really help lead the way and show maybe what the pathway is. There was, uh, almost 15 years ago now, some work by the then council, um, looking at the capital improvement plan and laid out over a period of five to six to seven years of kind of what the plan was. So every year is kind of looked at by the councils, yep, that makes some sense. Or maybe a few years out, maybe we need to tweak that a little bit. So I would encourage a council to, to look at doing something similar moving forward. That's not for tonight necessarily, but as we look forward, um, for 2025 is what's proposed. We've been able to shore up what we need to for now, but I think as we go through 24, uh, we should continue to talk about that for future years. So I'll just put that out there as well.
Any questions or?
Well, you know, I do.
Right on cue.
And I'll keep it short. Well, first I'll have to thank the finance director for spending a number of hours with me on Friday to go over the spreadsheets. So thank you for that. And what I had done is I had taken the spreadsheets that I'd received from, uh, finance last year and compared them to what we have in the packet and, and, um, had a number of questions on that. Um, and just, I, so I have a few, actually more observations than, than questions at this point. I know some of the costs are updated. That was part of, because there, when I looked at the, the expenditures that were in similar years from last year's spreadsheets to what was in the similar years this, they were different. And part of it was they updated some of the costs and, um, which, which is part of, and then part of it is they added some different items too. So, um, for an example, like the police vehicle equipment expense went up 46% from the spreadsheets I had last year. And part of it was that crazy level of costs that, um, they have to pay for like personal protection and all of that. But then there's some. But then there are some additional items, and I know I have a few more questions in about some of the items in particularly in that fund. And but the big one I wanted to point it out, in the general facilities, the expenditures went up 85% from last year's spreadsheet because the oval expenses are back in there. Now, if everybody recalls, the oval expenses have been in it and out and in and out of it because we took it out thinking we were going to get bonding, and then we put it back in when we didn't get bonding. So I wanted to point out that there's expenses over a number of years for the oval that are in there, but the bonding isn't in there. And so if we get bonding, that should help that line a bit, even though it's still, you know, yeah. So anyways, that one particularly, because if you look at it, you see this big jump. And then the streetlight maintenance expenditures were up 391% from the previous spreadsheet. And of course, we knew that what happened was the Excel contracts expired. And you know, the thought was, you know, we didn't realize it was going, they weren't going to continue, so we have to quickly come up with the money for that. The park improvement has a line called natural resources, and it just has like a flat 50,000 in it each year. And thank you, Matt, for sending me the Parks Director, because that actually, they're working on each year, they have the natural resource plan, and it's very detailed, and there's a lot of projects in there, and they're still working on that. So there should be some more detail. Right now, when you look at it, it looks like this flat 50,000 in there. It almost looks like a plug number, but it's a placeholder for all these other.
It should be increasing, you said?
Not necessarily. That's usually, I don't usually go for that. And then the path and parking lot maintenance has a new line in it. There's an additional 50,000 a year, which had a big impact on that particular fund, and that's for the new pathway construction. So, you know, that's something this council had decided, we wanted to increase connectivity, and so that's just one of the items in there. Everything has a price tag to it, and so that will show you, you know, what that piece is. And then two other comments. The CIP actually does have a few maintenance items in there, too, in some of the funds other than just capital items. So, you know, when you, and it's interesting because they say, well, should you put emerald ash bor expense in the operating? But then it ends up in the CIP. So, you know, you have some interesting pieces that are in here. It's not all that clean-cut. And then I do support using some of the cash reserve for this year only, and I like the idea that it's being used for the CIP. I do not support using that for operations ongoing, but when you're looking at funding assets, then it makes more sense to me. And I think you made a good point, City Manager Pat Trudgeon, is that we can't live on that and that, but we do have a nice balance, so we should use it now while we can, but not thinking that's going to be an ongoing way of funding this. So, and then I also, there's a couple other pieces that aren't in here. I know like the fire department is working on getting grants for the fire truck. So all those grants aren't in the funding sources either. And so this looks bleak, but if you did increase the funding sources by, if we get bonding or if we get some grants, that will help offset it. So I mean, that's, but you know, and I agree that what they're trying to do is show you, this is what it looks like without that in there. And until we actually get a more idea if we're going to get that or not, it makes sense not to have it in there. But that, we, in the past, we had put in some of the bonding and some of the increases. So when you're doing the comparative, it can make it look off from the previous year.
Look a little more grim than it.
Yeah, it looks grim, yeah, than it really is on that part. So anyways, those are just the recap of spending many quality hours with our finance director.
Thank you for doing that. If we each did that, it would have been her all week.
So anyways.
Great idea. Well, if you've got any questions on any of the individual funds, you've got a copy of every fund that's in the CIP. I could certainly go through them all, but given this is your first draft. You know, if you do have questions, I am more than willing to sit down and walk through.
Councilmember Strawn?
I just have one question about the huge building expense in 2043. What is that attributed to?
That is attributed to the oval refrigeration system.
Okay. There's pieces through the whole.
Well, the big chunk.
It's the big one, though.
It's the concrete flooring.
Yeah.
And it's a 50-year life of that, so 1993 or so, it was built, so it's about a 50-year timeframe. So it's a huge expense that popped up on our CIP for the first time last year, and obviously, we'll have to continue to look at that and see what we're doing.
Okay.
I just remember refrigeration because it's concrete refrigeration.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Braden?
Speaking of that and bonding, so in 2024, or 25, I'm sorry, we have about 500,000 for deminification system at the oval, as well as the roofs and some other major things. Is that stuff we were hoping to get bonding dollars for, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that currently figured into our levy, though? Like each year?
No.
We levy a certain amount for our CIP?
We.
That not in the levy, but it is in the budget?
Do not add that to the levy each year we levy, if you look in the chart, 600 and
51,000.
To build that fund.
Yeah, so we've got a flat levy, but the expenses each year change. And so we've got the expenses in. The levy doesn't change, and we don't know if there's going to be a bonding bill or not. So all of the projects that we had tried to get bonding for are in here because the things need to be done.
Yeah.
We will still pursue state bonding if and when the legislature says they're going to consider a bonding bill. And, you know, this fund, you know, has current resources over the short term. But we might want to consider as part of bonding, because the fire department, we've got debt slash other in here, that's debt and grants. Whatever we don't get for grants, we're going to have to issue debt because this fund doesn't have cash to pay for the million eight. And so we can bundle together some equipment, larger, long-lived pieces of infrastructure to fund the current outlay, but that does come with a cost in that the debt service would then be a general obligation property tax increase.
Okay. Then I have one observation and then one policy thought. The second, the observation is I'm struck by what a significant negative change we have in our projections from a year ago or two years ago. Yeah.
That's because last year, you guys directed me to remove all tax levy increases for outlying years. That's the number one main driver for why they're all going down. The second driver is the cost of our vehicles has gone up significantly. And since I came here, we've been bringing numbers up to today's value. We're not projecting inflation going forward. We're just bringing everything up to today's value. And some of these pieces of equipment have increased significantly. And in the case of the police department, they're phasing out the chargers, so they're going to have to switch models altogether, which is more expensive. The fire engines were in below $1 million. Well, that electric is $1 million eight. So, you know, making some of those changes is why some of these charts start to not look so well.
And there's no grants or?
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. It was more of an observation of when I looked at someone, yeah.
That's why I compared last year to this year, to see exactly where that was.
Yeah, no, it doesn't look good. So then getting to the policy piece, as someone who arrived just after some of these changes were made in creating a long-term CIP and funding it more robustly the year afterwards were put in place, I would note that I would be wary of us talking about borrowing over and over again. Certainly, there's some targeted reasons to borrow sometimes, but for those who will be hanging out here longer, there are consequences to that. And so to be thoughtful about thinking ahead and putting money in the bank puts us in a much better financial situation usually, so.
I have a question on the, you mentioned that part of the reason that looks worse is that we've taken the levy projections out. What were they before? How, what did you factor into that?
Well, originally, I'd have to pull up.
Was it a percentage per year or something?
No, no. It would start with like the five funds that we talked about.
Yes.
That we're now using excess tax reserves. So I would plug that in, and that would become the new normal for 20 years out. So not just one year, but it would be an increase going forward, so it compounds.
Yeah, so for instance, we would, Michelle and I would sit and say, okay, if we added $50,000 of levy moving forward and then across the board all those years, then how does that affect the chart? You can see it moving as we're doing. So we included that, some of that stuff in there. So as you looked at the charts, a lot more charts look better than it would have. So you can see if just 50,000 now.
Yeah.
Changes that projection, extends it out further. And that, those are the exercises we need to kind of go through here and kind of figure out a little bit now can make a big difference down the road.
Yeah.
Versus waiting to the last second.
Explains that much better.
Yeah, so literally, we sit down for a couple hours.
Play with things like that.
Playing things like that. To see what would we have to do? And in a couple of cases, it's, well, if we do this next year and we, you know, start small and then maybe incrementally have to increase it. So prior to last year, the CIP sheets that were approved every December had additional levies across the board.
Not on every fund, but.
Yeah.
But several key ones.
Yeah, these ones that we keep talking about, so.
That helps put it in perspective. So we're accepting the preliminary, and of course, this will be ongoing as.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was wondering if there's anyone from the public who wanted to speak to this item? I'm seeing heads shaking, so. Continue on. Thank you for the presentation unless someone has something else. Move on to the next one. And the next one is a review of the sales tax referendum ballot question. So there are a couple options in there, and I believe our attorney will.
I'll lead and then be supported by Ms. Attorney. So as the case indicates, as you know, on November 5th, will there be a referendum question for the voters to consider approving two referendum questions about creation of a local sales tax to fund the new parks and public works maintenance facility and the license and passport center? The state law does require that the city provide the county written notice of the ballot questions prior to August 13th, 2024, so they can get the ballot ready. As part of that, the council must determine both the ballot title, which is interesting enough, limited to 10 words, very specific, and also the question itself. And the city attorney needs to be involved in that process, and to that accord, we've had Ms. Attorney draft some questions for you to consider here tonight that kind of stays within the bounds of what we required. It can't be persuasive, but something that the average voter can understand. I would note that under the sales tax legislation, as we have two different projects, there are two separate questions, one for the parks and public works maintenance facility and the other one for the license and passport center. Doesn't mean there's two sales tax. The sales tax would fund one or two projects if approved here. So in your packet tonight is some draft questions for both of those. Once again, one for the parks and public works maintenance facility and another one for the license and passport center, and I can pull them up on the screen in here in a second. One is very basic and simple, just talks about what the ask is and also states that if one or both questions are approved, it's only, the city is only authorized to have one half of 1% sales tax for the lesser of 20 years or until the sales tax has been raised to pay for the cost of the proposed projects. The option two for each of these is adding a little bit more language about what voting yes means and what voting no means. That's a little bit more helpful perhaps, but as you start trying to describe that and get a little bit more wordy and complicated. So we've drafted both of those just for your consideration. We're looking for some sense of direction here tonight, but we're not asking for any approval. Plan on bringing that back at the August 22nd meeting, I'm sorry, July 22nd meeting. Stay out of here already, for final consideration and approval. So with that, I'll pause, see if the city attorney has anything to add, and I'll pull up on the screen the questions so we can see them in front of us.
I don't have much to add, other than just my advice to you and all councils who create ballot language is that this is not the time to try to stack the deck. This is the time to make sure your voters are informed and that the language is as clear as possible for as many people as possible to understand. I think that that protects you legally, but it's also just good policy for the record.
So we should have a discussion now. Everyone has it in the packet.
Well, I think for clarity of that, currently, the way it's written, it can be misleading. So it says sales tax for new parks and public works maintenance facility. And if you just read the top of that, you would assume that there were new parks and a public works maintenance facility. So I propose that we say for new public works and parks maintenance facility. Just because I feel like new parks can be misleading, and people think that there are parks also being impacted. And so then I would make that change throughout all of the language, that you would just move to build a public works and parks maintenance facility throughout each of that, and just move.
Great point.
Councilmember Braden?
I would, I would agree with that as a clarity point. I might offer this, just calling it a maintenance facility kind of undercuts what it is. And as I looked at these numbers, I was communicating with Mr. Trudgeon today, these are big numbers, and so making sure people understand a little more what's going on. So I take your point 100%, number Strawn, but I might even flip that around and say maintenance and operation facility for public works and parks.
Too many words.
Adding the, the only, the only word I added was operations.
Yeah.
That's the only word I added, but it's understanding that this is not just like a place where we fix trucks for $64 million.
Yeah, we're at, we're at 10. What I will say, though, is.
We're at 10 words.
10 words. We can't add one word to that title because we're already at 10 words. The title itself has to be 10 words. We can add more, we can add more information. We can add additional information into the question. The title is limited to 10 words. The number of words in the question is not limited. Well, there's no statute or Minnesota rule limiting the language. It should be as brief as it can, but you can add additional information there. And that's part of the reason for this conversation. Is there additional information and clarification that you'd like to add into those questions?
Yes, to that, you know, to your point, Councilmember Braden, you know, maybe swapping out the word maintenance facility to operations facility. We generally call it a maintenance facility, but it's much more than maintenance. It's for storage, it's where our operations are. We store a lot of equipment there, so a lot of material, sand and salt, fueling facility there, have administrative offices there. So.
So it it's something to consider if if not in the title, which I didn't know, we only had 10 words. Maybe I didn't read well enough. Within the. I'm sure. Within the body of that paragraph, it could be there. But really, it's an operations facility that includes maintenance. So that that would be that would be the thing I would ask for us to consider in that.
I do like the word on maintenance in there somewhere though because when the general public hears operations, boy, that's kind of a vague term.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not saying you're wrong, I just.
Yeah.
Think maintenance is limited also.
See your point.
So one option would be to actually take, just say new public works and parks facility and then within the body, talk about maintenance, storage and operations facility or or just elaborate on the purpose within the paragraph, but keep that question tight.
Yes.
Yeah, I do like that.
We need to use the word new.
No.
At least in the title, it seems like we could expand in the definition that is a new. But if I guess if we want to keep it short and to the point, new kind of steals the thunder from public works. Sales tax for public works and parks. Maintenance facility, operations facility. I mean, I think operations, maintenance, yes, could be in the definitions, but if operations more fully embraces what it does. I personally prefer the option two in understanding what the each of the votes. It does make it exceptionally long. But I do feel like telling people what that yes vote equals is really important because otherwise the messaging you need to have in advance is so much greater. Whereas when they're standing there, they can make a decision when they're in the ballot box making a decision.
And I can tell you that that language came from if if the vote was a levy increase, the vote yes language is required. So and and you know, when I did some research on what other jurisdictions have done in these questions, some are including this vote vote yes language. Fewer are including including both yes and no language. But it isn't required for the sales tax measures. It is required under state law for levy increases.
If you go off for a bond, yeah.
Let's remember it.
I I was actually used to maybe thinking about levy language that the yes was there. I found the no to be extremely long and confusing and ended up with zero new information for the public. If you owe yes, you get this. Well, obviously, if you don't know, you don't, you know, have this tax. So if we would go with option two, I would not want the by voting no because it just adds too much. Adds too much and I don't I don't think it adds any clarity. I think it reduces clarity for the public.
I would agree with that. And well, because what I had written down, the no only says, if you're going to put that in there, it says that it would not be, the sales tax wouldn't be there, but then it doesn't say, well, what would be paying? You know, what what would be the means that we're going to pay for it if you vote no? So if you put no in it, you'd have to expand it more.
If no, then it will be.
Either bonding or.
Additional tax levy from the city to all residents or, you know, or something, right?
Yeah, so because the no was only half half there. So I if you're going to put that in, you'd have to expand it, I would think. Or take it out.
I think at that point, if if that was the message we wanted to send, that should be part of the educational pieces rather than something on a ballot that again, just going to, people aren't going to read it. It's just me.
Yeah, I agree. You don't want it too long.
So are we hearing consensus to take out the no part of that question? Okay. Back to the title.
Back to the title.
Certainly switch the public works and parks.
Yes.
So given the limit of words, can only swap out one word.
Well, I I kind of like the idea with the attorney to just take out maintenance and operation totally and just say, public works and parks facility. Then you could, if you put, I I guess I'm neutral on the new part, but.
I think new is superfluous.
So then we're coming down to sales tax for public works and parks.
Facility.
Given maintenance facility.
By dropping maintenance or some other word, we say parks facility. People read that back out, they're thinking of a building. They might think of those buildings.
I I liked the word operations.
Here too, but I'm not going to die on the hill.
Yeah, well, operations is better than maintenance, I think.
But we have 10 words if we include that.
Well, you get rid of the word maintenance.
Okay.
So then we have nine words. Get rid of the word.
And new, right?
Replace maintenance with operations.
Yeah, hold on. We got another word we could do.
Yeah, that's so exciting.
Well, maybe maybe a public input will give us some ideas.
You see someone moving in.
Yes, he's we got somebody wants to.
I would request your.
Come to the. Come and sit up.
Come on up.
Give us your name and do the routine.
You know.
In fact, could you read the rules first?
Could you remind me?
Need to be posted up here.
Anyway, Roger Heswig, what happens if, can you get rid of the and have public work slash parks? I don't know how that affect your word count.
The slash count as a word.
I I have no idea whether slash counts as a word. Be that for the record. Um, I I don't, I don't think that's a great drafting technique to save the words.
Nothing else?
At the moment.
If we go with sales tax for public works and parks operations facility, that is. Nine, drop the word new and swapped out operations for maintenance.
That's more inclusive.
Okay.
Our public works director want to give us a. Our park director ran away, so.
He doesn't want to get involved.
Nice you two matched back there though. In Thai, I don't know, okay.
Yeah, we're only up to nine words with that. You have another word you could add in.
Yeah, no.
Attorney wants to add another word.
And then we'll drop the no, go with option two, but drop the word, the whole sentence about voting no. The next up, maybe a little bit easier, is for the license and passport center. Once again, we have the word new in there. Assume you'd want to drop the no question, the no part, option two as well. Similar language swapped out.
I would I would think you'd want them similar.
Yeah.
I would keep them similar.
Yeah, I would take out the word new, just it's expanded in the option two and then the no sentence.
And once again, we're we bring this back for.
Because it does have to build a new license and passport center in the body of the thing. So it is explained there, so.
Yeah, I think if we long as we say that in in there.
Yeah, I agree that the new in the title actually kind of detracts from what the point is.
If you have it in the body, I think that makes sense.
One of the other things I communicated with Mr. Trudgeon about this afternoon is this is not just a license and passport center, but to put parks facilities on the second story. Is there a responsibility to make note of that somehow? It's a two-story structure and one story is all we're talking about. We're telling half the story.
I got it.
He got it. Yep, you guys are all going to.
I guess Pat did three quarters of the story. Can you remind me? I don't recall seeing other language in the state approval.
The the approval was for funding for determined to be a two-story building. And the idea was on the second level, we would put some park components, dance studio.
A park facility.
That's a park facility. So while we could explain that, I'm not sure in the question. I mean, then we start getting into lengthy stuff, the question.
Well, it I I guess my concern is if if you're, if it's space up there, that's maybe flexible. If you put that specifics on the ballot, you come up with a really weird voter intent question that you don't need. So I, you know, nobody knows what happens then. That's one of the debates lawyers have when we're bored. But it, you know, you you don't want to lock yourself into a use that you may want to change in the future.
Use your flexibility.
If it was in the if it was in the legislation, which I don't recall seeing it there, then we might need to talk about whether it should be there or not. If it's not there, I would encourage you to maintain the flexibility.
So I think that's a long way saying no.
You can do it, you can do whatever you want. I don't think there's a there's a reason no.
As a very informed voter, that's a lot of money for a passport and license center. As anyone who knows new construction, that's what it costs nowadays.
And 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 these numbers are based on estimates done a few years ago.
And it'll only be the amount that it actually comes in on. And we're projecting out two, three, I don't know how many years we're out.
And it's it's that cost does not cover just actual construction. It's the tear down and other stuff and grading and all the stuff. We did, if you recall from the study, had an inflator of 7% for three years. Get those costs up, so we're hoping that is at the high end. Can't guarantee by the time we get around to building it, what it's going to.
Gets.
Very likely, they usually don't. I mean, you might have to cut things is what happens, you know, so. But we're getting on a whole different track. We just need to focus on the language, I guess. Any other comments on the language?
Yeah, public comment.
Oh.
Please come up, sit down. Sit down.
Tell your name.
Tell us the rules.
Chris Wagner, please. I mean, some of your discussion now has kind of answered my question because I still don't see from the question you have up here, are you asking for approval to build these buildings? Are you asking approval just how to pay for the buildings? Because those are two completely different things. And it sounds like a no vote will be going to property taxes. But I think you guys need to actually tell the public that before they vote, that they should know the what will be consequences of all four votes that could be or results that could be from this election. So hopefully you'll do that sometime before November.
Exactly.
Because, I mean, myself, I want to, I want the public works facility, but I want to pay with property taxes. So I don't know if I'm supposed to vote yes or if I'm supposed to vote no. Because if I, if you want me to approve the building, I got to say yes. If you just want to approve how I want it paid for, I would say no. So hopefully you'll clear it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just reminder, this question is about the sales tax specifically, but not the project. It's about what the project with the sales tax. We're sure the public knows that and that's a good point.
Yeah, and I do say that in the heading.
Yeah, and I think too, as far as the material that we present, and I think there probably should be some additional council conversation about the willingness to continue with the project or not if the sales tax doesn't pass, so we can communicate that effectively to the public. I think a lot of it's assumed, but I don't want to assume anything. There's been past decisions to go down this path. But we should probably have a check in again to make sure that what messaging you want us to put out there as far as if this were to not pass, what that means. But this specifically is questions about whether or not we should institute a sales tax.
Right.
Fund these projects.
Do we have direction on the ballot question?
I think so. City attorney, do you have what you need to?
I think I have what we need. For you to consider next week. I will just regarding the last point by our guest speaker, it it is required under state law that that the question be specific to a project. So to the, you don't really have a choice of deciding to just ask for approval of the sales tax. And so that those two things are required to be together. So I don't, I don't know that this is 100% fixable.
Well, I think that my interpretation was that if we, if we go ahead, it would have to be funded in a different way than the sales tax. And it could still go ahead with different funding, but we'd have to find out what that would be. That would be a pretty heavy lift, in my opinion, but that would be another conversation, so.
Well, and that, you know, that's we're getting kind of back into the vote no language. What would that look like? If you were going to roll out, you could not do it. You could pay for it with taxes. You could beg for state bonding money. You could do any number of of other funding sources to still complete the project.
I think it's too long to start listing.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, that's.
Yep.
Good, we'll move on to the last items on the agenda. And we are down to council direction on council member initiated agenda items.
I don't think we have any minutes today.
No.
That's the wrong one. Can't see from across the way. Load it up. And no comment. I'm sorry, I thought I loaded up. If you want to talk about anything that you want to talk about, I can load it up right here.
Anyone have any council initiated?
I'll just do that. Future agenda items, communications reports. As soon as Mr. Trudgeon has that up for us to review, he's in our packet also. I, you know, I'm sorry, I must have copied the wrong one when I was rushing to do that. It is in your packet.
I'm going to use the.
They look at the middle one there, it's future agenda 715.
Oh, there we go, okay. Thank you. So. Our next meeting is July 22nd. We'll have a joint meeting with Public Works, Environment and Transportation Commission. We hope to bring forward recycling card contract and the recycling RFP, the sales tax question that we mentioned. We also have on here most likely denial of a massage therapist establishment. I'll I'll provide the additional information as part of the packet, but this is a property that we've been dealing with for quite a while. But we are recommending denial of that request, so we'll bring that forward. After that, our next meeting is August 5th. We'll bring back just a conversation about the fire department staffing study. As you know, Chief Ross and I was here to talk about future staffing, the idea of maybe having a consultant. We did get some prices. I mean, just want to come back and check in with the council and see what we want to do next. And then we hope to be in position to award the strategic planning consultant contract. Councilor Schroder and Mayor Rowe will be joining us on Thursday and Friday as we do some interviews for the four consultants that have submitted and will come forward with recommendation. Would mention a couple of dates that are not typical for the council coming up, either August 15th or 16th. Have to be determined by the county canvas, the primary election results. We have typically done that, they get new on a Friday or Thursday. So it would just be one quick, short meeting, five-minute meeting. August 18th, main event is my budget presentation. And just a reminder, August 21st and 22nd are potential dates for interview applicants for Equity and Inclusion Commission. You can probably count on the 21st and 22nd might be. I would also mention, I met with school superintendent Lake today in looking to get together a joint meeting. We tentatively circled August 20th, which is a Tuesday, when we would go over to the school district to have a joint meeting as part of their meeting. Back in 2017, we did hold a joint meeting here at City Hall. So I think perhaps Councilmember Atten was the only one that was maybe on the council then. So we're probably long overdue, but just an opportunity for both boards to meet. I will send an email out to all of you tomorrow as to see any availability on that. And my apologies for it's kind of kind of quick, but we've been trying to meet all summer. We finally get a chance to meet here today to spread that out. So some more to come on that. And that's all I have for future agenda.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, Mr. Trudgeon, will that be during the day or in the evening?
It'll be six thirty. You have a council meeting Monday and then perhaps that meeting and then interviews. It's a busy week.
That's how it worked last time too, I think. Any, any announcements? You know what the last item is, Councilmember Branton's favorite.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
No discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.